Yeah.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay. In accordance with section five of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the advisement notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall, mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually, indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, November first, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven P. M. via Zoom webinar. Craig Clotner?
Here.
Jody Sharma?
Here.
Steve Togar?
Here.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Here.
Amy Lawrence?
Here.
Shandru Horejani?
Here.
Jessica Glatte?
Here.
Joseph Steinberg?
Here. All right, we have, do we, we have minutes of September twentieth?
No, there's no minutes. We, we did them at the last meeting.
Oh, okay. Any memorializations, Rob, besides the one?
We just have the one memorialization for Sanai and Alpeconi South.
Did you get any other comments on that?
I, I did not, and I have circulated amongst the board members last evening, the latest version of that. Wolfgang, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, just one minor comment, just in paragraph thirty-four. Uh, or is it? Thirty-four. Paragraph thirty-four, it says, "The applicant proposed no effective mechanism to ensure", I believe that should be ensure. E.N. rather than I.N.
Yeah, that's, yes. Just, just, I'm, I'm sorry, Wolfgang, tell me where that is.
The first line of paragraph thirty-four.
Correct.
Oh, I, I, I got it. Yep. Thank you.
And I just found one typo at the last minute on page three, number seven. It, it says, "Once was named the Glenwood Cafe", it should be, "One was named the Cat Glenwood Cafe and the other was named Tilly's", that's all.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh.
That's on page three. Um, number seven. One, two, three, four, the fifth line.
Yes, one, one as opposed to once.
Once, yeah, that's it.
Any other comments or corrections? Is there a motion to adopt this memorializing resolution?
Joe, let me just interrupt for one second, just to remind the board that because this was a statutory denial, the only members, I believe, if I recall correctly, that are eligible to vote on this would be Joe Wolfgang and Jody.
A question on that. I have a question on that point, I mean, because it also. Sorry, Eileen, go ahead.
Eileen, go ahead.
Okay, because the motion was to deny, correct?
Yes.
So it would be anybody who voted yes to deny.
If, if the motion was to deny, it's. That's correct.
So I, I thought it would be Craig, Joy. I'm confused.
No, no, I, I voted, I voted in the, in the negative on the denial. So I was for the case, so.
Okay.
So that, that's why I, I cannot vote on this.
Right.
It's gonna be Joy, Wolfgang, and Joe, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That was a little confusing. I couldn't figure out what I wrote, okay.
Yeah, be- because as this board is aware, it was, it was a D, form of D variance, and it required five affirmative votes, and it did not achieve that five affirmative vote number. And Wolfgang, you're having a question about the bulk variances?
Yes.
So I, I, I think that the, the proper way to handle that, because it's, it should be, and it was contained, it all in one resolution, is I still believe that because, uh, actually, the three of you voted in favor of the bulk variances, if I recall correctly.
I, I did not.
You did not, okay, well then, then Jody, thank you for clarifying that. Then, um, Jody and, and Joe, I believe, can, um, can vote on that.
On the bulk, I thought the bulk variances would be, uh, subsumed in the, uh, D variances.
Now, we, if you recall, at the end of the hearing, we asked the applicant's attorney if they wanted a separate vote as to the C variances, and they did want that, so we took a vote on the C variances. And my recollection, thank you Wolfgang, is that only Wolfgang voted no on the C variances, and I believe everyone else voted yes, correct?
I have Jody as a no as well.
She does, okay.
Joe as a yes on the parking and loading.
Well, under those circumstances, then Joe can actually be the one person who votes on this resolution. And he's permitted to vote on that by.
On the, on the, uh, C variances.
Well, no, it's the whole resolution, correct?
It, it's on, on the whole resolution. Correct. Eileen, can you just confirm that? So, so Joe was the only one who voted with the three and also voted in favor of the bulk variances, correct?
I have him as, yeah, I had him as a condition.
I, I think we should have separate votes.
Well.
We should have a vote on the, on the D variants where there was, oh, there were only three people who voted no on that, right?
That's correct. There's three people who are eligible to vote on this resolution concerning the D variance.
The D var.
The D variance. My recommendation is that if Jody and Wolfgang voted no as to the bulk variances, and everyone else voted yes, that Joe Steinberg, you would be the only one who would be voting as to this resolution. That's my recommendation.
Yeah. I, I have the voting, um, the minutes, the, the, um, bulk variances, there was a motion made by Craig, seconded by Jessica, and it was, the only people who voted yes for the bulk were Craig, Joy, Steve, Jessica, and Joe. So the only one who would, you're right, would be Joe Steinberg, he's the only one who on the resolution.
What would the, what would the motion be? It would have to cover both the C and the.
It would be a motion to approve the resolution. And you are permitted to have one person vote on the resolution.
It's a resolution, is a resolution of denial with regard to the D variants, right?
That, that's, that is correct.
Denial of the D and the approval of the parking, and you were the only one who had those same, had those votes.
Right.
So you're the only one eligible to vote on the resolution.
If you, if you want to vote, that's my recommendation. If you wanted to have a separate vote as to the D portion of the resolution and the C portion of the application of the resolution, technically, you could do that, although my recommendation is just to have.
Well, I, I wanna do that, I wanna have separate votes. So let's have a vote on the, uh, D variants. It was a motion to deny. I'll make that motion. Wolfgang, would you second it? Motion.
Second.
To deny the D.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Just Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Now we're going to the C variances. Those were, I think unanimously, no, they were not unanimous. Everyone voted yes except Wolfgang.
And Wolfgang.
Oh, right. So is there a motion on the C variances? This would be.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Joe, one second. Eileen, then if we're gonna do it this way, I'd like you just to make sure that at the end of the resolution, that the resolution be revised to indicate who's voting as to each one of these variances, okay?
Okay, we'll put that in.
Got this.
Uh, this is a motion on the C variances. Is there a motion?
This is, oh, this is only, to the extent the resolution discusses the C variances.
Correct.
So moved? I mean, I voted in favor of the C.
Right.
And it passed on the C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, there's seconds.
Craig Clotner?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Jessica Glatte?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Any other memorializations tonight?
Yeah, just that one.
Okay, we're gonna turn to the cases tonight. The first case is Sixth Stewart Road, uh, Boydman. The applicant here or an attorney representing the applicant or both?
Um, Boydman is, I believe, Doug Miller.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Doug, um. Do you know if Mark Boydman is just listed as Mark? I, I have just a mark here, I don't know if that's him.
I, I believe that's him, he said he's attending.
Okay. And just you two, or do you have a planner or?
No, it's just us two.
Hey, yeah, that was me, Mark, hey, guys.
If you, if both of you would just raise your right hands, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom, uh, hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, not but the truth?
I do.
You've lost Mr. Boydman.
I, I do.
You do? Oh, there you are, okay. Just state your names, uh, for the record, please.
Mark, why don't you start?
Sure, Mark Boydman.
My name is Douglas Miller from A.H.M. Architects, located at two eighty-one Main Street in Melbourne, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Who's gonna speak first?
Yeah, I'll, uh, Mark, do you wanna say some words? You want me to just to get, get started?
No, go, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, my client, uh, Mark bought this house, uh, almost.
Excuse me, one, one second, Mr. Miller. Are you going to be testifying as an expert in the field of architecture?
I am.
All right, well, why don't we get you qualified? So why don't you tell us a little bit about your, um, experience, licenses, areas of expertise in the field of architecture?
I've been licensed as an architect since, uh, two thousand and one, I have been.
In Jersey, in New Jersey?
In New Jersey, yes, my license is in good standing. Uh, I've made numerous presentations to this board, as well as boards in all the surrounding communities. I don't know, so I'm gonna add.
Um, you've been qualified as an expert witness in the field of architecture by this board in the past, have you not?
I have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Your, for your qualifications as an architect are accepted by this board.
Wonderful. Um, yeah, so I could get started, if that's okay with everyone?
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, so, uh, as I started to say, my client purchased this house uh, almost a year ago, and he had the intention of renovating a home to move into. But after looking at the house and looking at all the changes that were necessary, we figured that the shortcomings were too difficult to overcome. Um, the property is actually made up of two structures. Uh, a house that was constructed about forty years ago, as well as a historic carriage house that was built in about nineteen fourteen. Uh, since the carriage house and this property is located in the Short Hills Historic District, we had to make a presentation to the Melbourne Historic Preservation Commission. And back in May, uh, May sixth of this year, uh, the application was approved. Uh, during that application, it was determined that the carriage house was actually the original carriage house to the home that's at one twenty-one, uh, Highland, so it was separated off at some point. Uh, so during the, uh, presentation, and, and subsequently to that, uh, the, the HPC Chair Alison Canfield uh, said that she was willing to come to speak on our behalf at, uh, this meeting. Uh, she was in attendance last time, we had come before you a number of months ago, but due to the agenda, uh, we couldn't get heard, and so we were continued to today. I reached out to her, and she may be in attendance tonight, and I don't know if she is or not, and whether or not this would be a good time for her to say some words, uh, or do we wait to the end and have her, uh, make some comments?
Let's see if she's here. Eileen, can you tell if she's here?
Who am I looking for?
She's not here.
No, she's not.
Okay. Well, I believe, uh, Ms. Sharma was at that meeting as well, I don't know if she recalls, it was, uh, uh, a number of months ago, but the thrust of it was, they, they liked what we were doing enough to grant our approval. So we are be for you now to kind of explain what we're doing and why we're doing it, and, um, why we're requesting these variances, so. You know, what I had said to the HPC, and which I'm gonna say to you now, is that you know, I wouldn't normally suggest raising a house in the historic district, um, but, and, and really to, to raise it to construct a new one. But, you know, this piece of property and, and this lot had a number of unique factors that made it the right decision. One, it's a non-contributing property. Um, and two, is there's already a, uh, more recently constructed home on site. Uh, this house, uh, is very unattractive. Uh, it's from like, what I call like, the dark period of American architecture, it was built during the eighties, and it's a contemporary design. Um, if you look through the application that I submitted, there's some photos of the house as it sits now, and someone has painted it like almost black. Um, and so it's like this Darth Vader house that sits in, uh, on the site, and it really doesn't do anything for the historic carriage house. So if you like, um, and then, and then the third factor is it's, it's a really unique site. The house is almost like a green island, uh, in this section of town, you can't see the house from Stewart Road. As a matter of fact, the driveway is an office steward. Uh, they have a shared driveway, uh, with ten steward, so the only way to access this house is from a private driveway. So let me talk you through the plans and, uh, and we kind of get more into the details, if you like, I can, I can share my screen.
Please, sir.
Okay. So what I'm pulling up here, uh, can everybody see that? Okay, yeah, so what I'm showing here is the same drawings that you all should have in front of you, uh, to the, uh, bottom here, which I'm kind of circling with my, uh, cursor. Uh, this is the, uh, contemporary home from the nineteen eighties. And this structure here at the bottom of the site is the, uh, carriage house. Stewart Road runs along, uh, the south of the property, and the private driveway is in this area here. Uh, ten steward is in, in this location. So as you drive down Stewart, you kind of go off, and then you pull in. So the house has the appearance of fronting on this private drive, uh, more of like a carriage house type appearance. Uh, and up on the top of the screen is what we're proposing. We're taking the existing, uh, carriage house, we're adding onto it to create a third garage bay, and we're building a new house, uh, back here, which is in this crosshatched, hatched section. Uh, I'll, as I go down the pages, we can kind of go through, uh, the drawings. So these are drawings of the existing carriage house. Uh, the front is, is always referencing the side that faces Stewart, even though when you look at this, that seems like the side, so it is a little bit confusing. The existing garage or carriage house has two garage bays. There's a small storage area in the rear, there's a staircase that goes up. Now, on the second floor, there's an existing rec room with a full bathroom. I, what we're proposing, uh, I'm on the next page here, this is the carriage house again, it's rotated, so now the, the front of it is facing the right, which is, uh, you know, Stewart Drive is, uh, Stewart Road is, is over here. Um, this is the one car garage I just referenced on the site plan. And so we've really created a more modern, open concept floor plan, we have a combined uh, kitchen dining family room across the, uh, this side of the, the house. We have a hall through the center with a living room study, uh, guest bedroom, and a kind of a, a glass breezeway that connects the more historic structure with the more modern one, which is the house we're proposing. Um, the family room opens out to a patio, um, an outdoor area, and, and a small pool. On the second floor, you can see this is the recreation room again, on the second floor of the carriage house, and then we have four bedrooms and a kind of a loft entertaining space. Uh, the bedroom is along this section of the house over that kind of combined kitchen family dining room, uh, with the, the bathroom, as well as three other uh, bedrooms and their associated bathrooms. Well, these are some drawings of the exterior, the elevation drawings, and you can see, you know, we tried to work within the scale of the carriage house, the carriage house is very small, so we tried to break down the scale of what we're, uh, proposing, as well as incorporating, uh, some of the shapes and forms that you find in the historic, uh, structure. Uh, the next page, these are the, this is facing the private drive, and, and this is what we're calling the, the, what I call the front of the house, but it's really the left elevation. Um, this is the right elevation, and then this is kind of a, a kind of a conceptual rendering I put together. It's very sketchy, but it gives you the idea of how these two volumes compare. You know, the two, uh, you know, the, these two dimensional drafted elevations really don't give you a sense of, of what the, uh, building is going to look like. So I put this together. And what you can see is that, although we have this existing carriage house that's more period to the neighborhood, uh, we tried to really incorporate that into the design. Um, I drew upon the local vernacular, I, I've tried to incorporate contextual elements to tie the two buildings together without, you know, copying them. Uh, we're using a gable roof on, on both elements, we're using cedar shakes, uh, the existing carriage house has a cedar shake roof, so we're gonna be doing the same cedar shake roof, and we have some cedar shakes on the second floor of the house. The carriage house is stucco siding, and we're gonna be using the same stucco siding on our, um, our new home. And the, and the third material that we're using is glass, and, and glass is a very interesting material. You know, not only is it transparent, but it's reflective. And in our case, the way that we structured the glass, it's really gonna kind of reflect the landscape. There's so much beautiful landscaping and mature foliage around this house, but I think that the glass is really going to reflect that back to the, the surrounding community, and allow those sections of the house to really, uh, recede and fade into the landscape. Uh, you know, instead of designing a failed pastiche, we simply evolve those concepts of what a traditional house is to construct something that's, I feel is kind of new and fresh, that kind of complements the community without necessarily mimicking it. Um, we're requesting C variances, uh, for this project, and it should really be noted that every variance that we're requesting is a direct result of hardship of having to work with the historic carriage house. Uh, let me walk you through the variances, and we can kind of go through them. The first is the side yard combined. Um, this is, this variance is required, let me move back to the, the site plan, and we can kind of zoom in and, and look at the site and how the house is located, and maybe it would be a little bit clearer, um, for, for everyone. So, uh, let's see, maybe that's the, uh, the closest I can get and get the whole thing in there. Hopefully, it's large enough for everybody to see, but you have the same drawing in front of you. So, uh, this variance is required because the existing carriage house is only twenty-two foot, twenty-two point nine feet away from, uh, the side yard, this is this dimension down here, I don't know if everybody can see my, my cursor. But, uh, you know, if, if we were to design the side yard combined conforming for this lot, uh, we would really have to take off thirty-six feet of width of the house to make the house narrow enough to meet the side yard combined restrictions. So that would result in a house that was uh, uh, only seven feet wide. And, you know, I, I think a house seven feet wide is not really, uh, possible or plausible. So if we didn't have the carriage house, you know, the house would be conforming, uh, for side yard combined. You can see the, these dash lines here represent the side yard requirements, and you can see we're far away from them on both sides, it's just because of the carriage house that we're encroaching, uh, along the private driveway. Uh, the next variance is for a rear yard unoccupied. And again, this is a direct result of the, uh, carriage house, the carriage house is cited where it is. It was cited there in nineteen fourteen, we can't move it because it's historic. So because it's in the rear yard, by the definition of the ordinance, it eats up rear yard space, thus, uh, resulting in the need for a rear yard unoccupied, uh, variance. Uh, next is, uh, rear yard. Again, you know, I sound like a broken record, it's all because of the carriage house, the carriage house was cited in nineteen fourteen, we didn't place it, so it has a twenty-one point five-three rear yard, uh, setback, power setback, uh, based upon the requirements, but the lot is conforming. So what we're proposing is conforming, the only thing that it is not conforming is the, uh, carriage house. Uh, the next one is for garage facing a public street. The existing carriage house does face the Stewart Road, and so we're not creating that variance, it's just a function of the existing carriage house. And since it does face Stewart, you know, the, the odd thing is that when you drive up to the house along the private drive, it really creates a courtyard appearance. I'm sure you've driven around town and you see these houses where the garage comes out, and, you know, there's kind of a, a forecourt, um, where the cars pull in, so even though it has this courtyard appearance, appearance, it's not a courtyard style house because the driveway doesn't front on the street that the house frontage faces. So it's kind of a unique, a very unique situation, like so much about this project. So, you know, the existing facade of the carriage house, I think, is attractive in its period, so, you know, I think the aesthetic of it is not a detriment to, uh, Stewart Road. And, um, lastly, which is kind of unusual, variances, accessory use in the front yard. Uh, and this is for the, the pool and the patio. And, uh, you know, we, we couldn't put the patio and the pool in the rear yard, because we're already asking for a rear yard unoccupied variance, that would give us even more rear yard unoccupied coverage, which, you know, we were trying to avoid. And the way that the house is cited with the other neighboring homes, uh, really presented a situation where putting the pool, you know, in this area would be much closer to ten Stewart Road, and then also closer to the home at, uh, on, on, uh, high Highland. So, you know, one twenty-one. You know, so we thought by putting it over here would be, uh, you know, the appropriate location. And, you know, the interesting thing about this house and the most beautiful thing about the property really goes back to the benefits of, you know, Stuart Hartshorn's master plan, you know, this section of Short Hills. You know, the, these unique lots are, are kind of really unusually shaped. It's not like other sections of town where they were kind of laid out on the grid. The roads really meander, and the way that he designed it was for these roads to follow the contours of the topography. So you kind of weave in and out and around all these kind of beautiful green oases, these, you know, his beautiful historic homes, and that's one of the nicest things about this section of town. And in our case, it creates, you know, really a benefit, because this really is that green island. And in fact, you, you could barely see this house from Stewart Road. And I know a, a pool in the front yard is unusual, but I have an aerial photo I could submit, uh, Rob, uh, Mr. Simon, as a, as an exhibit. Um, would you like to do that now?
If you want to submit it right now, you can, why don't you show?
If you want to submit it right now, you can, why don't you show it? Has that been submitted to the board before, Doug?
I did not. No, I just I just created it recently.
All right. So why don't we mark this as A one?
Okay.
And if you can just, I, first of all, what's the title of it? What's the date of it?
It's called the, it doesn't really have a specific date. It's a photo board. I could handwrite a date, a name, photo board. It's dated.
Why don't we date it today, then? There's no date on it.
It's dated today.
Okay, that works.
But there's no title.
Well, why don't you describe what what is this intended to be?
It's a grouping of photos that I took on the property. There are photos from the inside of the property looking towards the neighboring homes, looking towards Stuart Road, and also photos from Stuart Road looking back towards the home.
Okay, so these are, it's a series of eight photos on drawing number P one, right?
Correct.
Okay, and you and you took these yourself, how recently?
Over the summer. Just before the last HBC meeting, which I don't recall the date of when that was. I am the the last BOA meeting that we attended. So probably, you know, three or four months ago.
Okay, and they accurately depict the conditions they're intended to show?
I feel they do.
Okay, all right, proceed.
Okay, so let me zoom in. So I was talking about this kind of green oasis. You know, the house is still there. We haven't taken it down. But this is looking from Stuart Road, this first picture. Can everybody see that? So, you know, you can't see the house. It's it's completely invisible. This is the view looking from, you know, the entrance to the private drive I just described. Again, you can't see the house. This is me standing at at my height, so maybe my eyes almost six feet off the off the ground. So, you know, it's higher than you would view probably from a car. And back here, you can barely pick it up, but that's ten Stuart, which is kind of a flag lot behind our property. And then, you know, this is standing in the back in our rear yard, looking towards ten Stuart. You can't see the house. It's, you can barely pick a little bit of of it up. The one of the beautiful things, even though the house that was built on this property is very unattractive, that whoever did the landscape architecture was amazing. I mean, they picked incredible plants. They've flourished. They've really grown in and it creates this really nice texture, but also privacy. So you can't see that their houses. And if we can't see them, I'm I'm sure they can't see us. This is again, looking from the existing rear patio, looking towards ten Stuart. And you can see our carriage house, but you can barely see ten Stuart. This is looking at one twenty one Highland. You know, you can't see the house. That house sits up above us. So, you know, we can't see it. Yeah, that would be even higher than us and can't see it through the landscaping. You know, and I didn't try to take pictures just to prove my point. This is just the way it really looks. You know, this is again, another picture looking towards one twenty one Highland. And these are, these last two photos are pictures looking out towards Stuart Road. You can't see the road. It's just really private. This front yard really feels like a backyard because it's the area of the yard with the most sunlight. It's the area of the yard with the most green space. This area of the yard with lawn. So, you know, it only seemed natural to put our pool and our kind of our outdoor living space there. And not to be difficult, but I have another exhibit that I'd like to put in. It's a aerial photo. Sorry, with our house kind of superimposed on it.
Okay, why don't we mark this as A two?
A two, okay.
Okay, and what what? And by the way, for all the exhibits that we're marking this evening that you've not previously supplied to the board, I'm going to ask that they be supplied to Eileen at the conclusion of these proceedings.
I will.
What what is marked as A two? This is an aerial, but what is an aerial of? And where? How did you get a hold of this aerial photograph?
It was a was produced by Rich Keller, Casey and Keller. He's a licensed engineer and planner in town. He put together this for me because it was a scale representation of the our property as well as the surrounding properties. And he, what he did was superimpose the lot lines. You can barely see them. Ours is much older and bright yellow. But you can see the property lines and kind of faint yellow around all the other surrounding properties. So what this was to show is, you know, the kind of unique configuration of our piece of property and how it's really surrounded by green property and how our house is much smaller than all the surrounding houses. And the real main point of showing this image is the pool. You know, you think like, oh, who would put a pool in the front yard? That's really weird. But the house at one twenty one Highland, their pool is exactly where our pool is. You know, their house, even though it's addressed at one twenty one, doesn't face one twenty one either. It almost faces the side of their property as well. You know, this house is built in nineteen fourteen. This must have been their whole property at one point. And so this is what they're using as their rear yard. Their rear yard faces Western Drive, which is really just a continuation of Stuart Road. So, you know, if I had a pool in my backyard, I would want my neighbor's pool and their backyard to be contiguous with my backyard because that provides us the most open space. It gives us the most green space. It gives us, you know, preserves as much light air and open spaces, you know, what this whole land use ordinance is all about. And by, you know, making our front yard our backyard, you know, as far as how it functions, makes a lot of sense. And when you see this aerial photo, I mean, where else would you put the pool? I put it back here. It would be very close to ten Stuart, which is a very, very large house that kind of maximizes the footprint. And then the way that one twenty one Highland is situated, it's really tight to our property line. So by putting the pool here, you know, which is the rear yard, the traditional place for it, would be very close to two houses. So, you know, if you have kids or people playing in the pool, you know, you're just going to hear it. So by flipping it to the other side, you can't see it from the road as you saw, you know, from those street photos. But, you know, if you are making noise, you know, the neighbors are going to be making noise in their pool. So it 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 really makes a lot of sense. You know, all that mature landscaping really goes a lot to, you know, why this property is so unique. And, you know, because of the way these streets come together, you know, this is kind of a the front yard of ten Stuart. So this is a green zone. So it's it's really, you know, acts as a buffer to our our house. So, you know, our, if we go back to the numbers, our floor area is much, much lower than required for the zone. We're not maxing this house out. You know, we're we're maxing out the building coverage, but it's because of the carriage house. We probably would have designed this house differently if we weren't working with that structure. So I really think the scale of this house is appropriate. You know, it does look a little bit bigger in this picture, but we're, you know, highlighting our outdoor landscaping area primarily. But footprint of the house is much lower than the surrounding homes. You know, I think what we're proposing really creates a much more attractive home and and really improves the the housing stock. You know, what we're asking for in the main volume of house really conforms to all the requirements of the zone. It's only the carriage house that kind of triggers a lot of the, there's all these variances. Overall, what I think we're proposing here, the benefits outweigh the detriments. And so, you know, I think by replacing a very unattractive home with one that I think complements the community is is only a benefit. And without the hardship to preserve the carriage house, we wouldn't be before you. So I don't think what we're proposing is a detriment to the Milburn Master Plan. So I, that's all I have to say. I'm happy to open up to questions of board members. And address any questions they may have. So thank you for your time.
Doug, do you want to stop? Yeah. Are there any? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it's time that that it's opened up for our questions from board members.
Good idea. Anyone have any questions for this witness? Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions?
I I do. I just, yeah, I'd just like to understand for the, I guess, the rear yard unoccupied and rear yard setback. You made the comment that, you know, the the variances are driven by the location of the carriage house. And I'm just wondering, I guess, though it 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 seems to me more so to be the sighting, I guess, of the new house in relation to the carriage house. So I'm just wondering, you know, if you could explain that a little bit more and perhaps whether you had considered, you know, any alternatives that didn't have the same impact.
Yeah, the issue is, you know, not really the sighting of the the new house. It really is directly related to the carriage house because the rear yard unoccupied is calculated from the rear yard setback of the closest structure to the rear yard. So if we look at the area from the existing carriage house back to the rear lot line, and we kind of take a line straight across, that gives us our total rear yard unoccupied area. So that area in itself is less than required under the ordinance to have has green space. So.
No, I I understand that, but it 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 has changed certainly, right? From from what the existing to the proposed or has?
No, the carriage house is exactly where it was originally.
No, not the carriage house itself, the 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 percent of rear yard unoccupied and and the setback itself. They're not the same, are they?
Yes, they're they're the same. Because the carriage house.
And why are these numbers different? It's odd.
I'm gonna take a look.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding. It's possible.
Amy, you're referring to the fact that, for example, for the rear yard setback, and I'm referring to the summary of variances in attachment E that the way it's, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just just what, sorry. So if you look at rear yard, I I think attachment E is is there's just a typo. I think instead of fifty one point five seven, that should say twenty one point five seven, right, which is existing and then proposed to sixteen point six, which I assume is correct. That's what I'm referring to, the difference in where it's being driven from. That's all.
Right, yeah. So I think it's calculated in two different ways. You know, I think even though that the way that the carriage house is connected to the existing house, it's more of like a detached structure as opposed to an attached structure. So the way that the rear unoccupied is calculated differently, even though the carriage house doesn't move.
You also have a patio, don't you? That's that's causing some of that issue in the back?
Actually, the patio is in front of the the rear yard setback line. So, yeah, it does. I guess it does contribute a little bit.
On that corner.
Yeah.
I'm just certainly, you know, it's not a huge difference, but there seem to be differences in what is existing and what is proposed. The carriage house is not moving, so something else is happening. And that's all I'm trying to understand.
Right, yeah, because it's attached to detached carriage house. And that's how really the the difference as far as the way the numbers are calculated. It's measured from the rear of the principal structure to the rear lot line. But because we're attaching it, it's now measured from the
Oh, okay, I I understand.
Does that make sense? Sorry.
Yes, I think I got it. Thank you.
That's resulting in.
Thanks, Eileen. I couldn't hear you, but I could be feeling you.
Attached, so that's the rear yard setback is being measured there as well as the rear unoccupied. That's what's causing that.
Yes, I should have been more transparent.
Thank you, sorry.
Will King, did you have a question?
I was just gonna clarify. So then really that the change in the rear unoccupied really has to do with the new garage, the patio. As as those are the differences, the main differences that you see from the existing.
No, it's just the primarily the change in the way that the calculation is made. Because it's a detached garage, the setback is measured from the original principal dwelling to the rear yard. So that would give us our total area for rear yard. But because the carriage house is now attached, this rear yard becomes smaller from a number standpoint, so the area of that space becomes lower.
Thank you for reiterating that. That helps. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Or members of the audience?
Yeah, I have another question just regarding side yard combined. That's again, is that a similar situation in terms of existing? The side yard is calculated off the main the main house, the main structure. And in the in the new, in the in the proposed, the side yard is calculated off the of the garage?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other witnesses in this case?
No, I don't have any other witnesses.
Board members, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I don't I don't know if you opened it up for public comment if any.
I'm just about to do that. Is there anyone in the public who has a comment he or she would like to make to this board concerning any aspect of the case? Eileen, is there anyone with a hand raised?
No, there's no one.
I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Board members, comments?
Okay, so in general, I would support this application. I think the only thing I'm struggling with is the pool location. But I'm not saying no, but I am struggling with that portion of the the application. So if we vote on it in totality, which I assume maybe how it'd go, I'm not sure I would support it based on the pool.
Where would you, where would you think pool might go, Craig?
Well, either to not in general or perhaps on one of the sides.
And and you don't like.
A pool isn't mandatory to have a house, so I'm not looking at the pool as being a, you know, you can still have a house.
Right. I I don't, I I feel differently. I'm fine with the with the pool as they've proposed it. I think especially given the screening, the heavy screening around the that the entire lot really, but specifically that area of the lot. I don't think it's any detriment to, you know, to anything. And to my mind, putting it in the back would be, you know, put on the opposite side of the house would would clutter that area of the would clutter that area of the of the yard, the lot.
Well, I'm, like I said, I'm not, I'm not proposing where it goes. I'm just commenting on where it is.
Understood. And just offering my
Yeah.
my feelings on it.
Anyone else?
So I'll go. So I'm, I I think I'm in support of this application. You know, I visited the property and I it it's very subjective, but I I certainly agree with the architect's description, at least from the outside. I would say that, you know, if it wasn't for the historically significant carriage house, that we wouldn't, you know, because when I, when I first looked at this, I thought new construction, all these variances, what am I missing? And then, you know, I I thought, I thought it was well explained. So I really don't have an issue. And I do agree with the placement of the pool as described as being, you know, contiguous with the neighbor's pool. I think that kind of makes a lot of sense to me as well. And, you know, again, I know that my fellow board members visited the property and it is incredibly well shielded. I mean, the the yeah, so so I'm I'm actually in support of the application as it stands.
I'll put in my two cents. I would, I would associate myself with Steve Tog. I'll put in my two cents. I would I would associate myself with Steve Togar's comments. Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I I would too. I mean, I'm I wouldn't typically be in favor of having a pool in the front yard, but um it doesn't bother me because of the um more than adequate screening. Um the area was so well screened. I mean, it looks more like a backyard space to me than a front yard space, so I could support the application.
And I I would agree, um and having seen it from the Historic Preservation Commission's um point of view as well, um having seen it twice, I I think it's well shielded, so I would be able to support the application.
Likewise. Is there, yes. Andrew?
Uh no, likewise, I was supportive of your Steve's and Jody's comments.
Yeah, me as well. I think it's a very well thought out project. And and as was already said, that the front yard seems more like a backyard from the screening and the size and all of that.
Is there a motion in the case?
So I'll I'll move approval.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll I'll second.
Are you on for the next one as well, Doug?
I am.
You are, okay.
All right, I'm gonna start off. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wolfgang Chituras?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Wyatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate it.
Are you on for the next one as well, Doug?
I am.
You are, okay.
All right, I'm gonna start off. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case.
I need um.
A second to get all my other exhibits together. I apologize.
Um or am I bringing anyone other than the applicant over? Just be.
Just the applicant.
Yeah, everyone. Hello.
Okay, if you both would raise your right hands, please.
Yep.
I guess everybody should. You swore in front of testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Just state your names for the record, please, spelling your names.
Kesha Sharma.
K E S H N I S H A R M A.
Um and my first name is Nikhil, that's spelled N I K H I L, and my last name is Aima, A I M A.
And I'm Douglas Miller uh from AHM Architects, two eighty one Main Street, Auburn, New Jersey. Uh I've been before this board before.
Okay, who's gonna begin?
Uh I I think uh.
I, yeah, I can, I can.
Wait, 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 I think, sorry, Mr. Miller, but I think we need you, we just heard you, I know, but you have to repeat your education and your experience again.
Well, I think that I think that Mr. Aima was about to begin.
It's fine. I mean, I can wait for Doug to uh to start, you know.
To you. Who who do you want?
Yeah, I'll just uh say a few words about my experience and and then uh maybe Mr. Simon can uh recognize me as a of uh an expert. Uh I I've been licensed since two thousand and one uh my in New Jersey. Uh my license is in good standing. I've made presentations at this board before, as well as uh numerous other boards in the surrounding community.
Obviously, this board is familiar with Mr. Miller's qualifications. There are any questions?
This board previously. Is that correct?
Yes.
As well, e- even this evening.
As as recently as five minutes ago, yes.
Right. Your qualifications as an architect are accepted by this board.
Wonderful, thank you.
But who's gonna proceed here?
All right, I can.
The homeowners wanna say a few words.
Yes, please. Oh, thank you so much uh for giving us the time to begin with. But uh I do wanna say, acknowledge the fact, we moved to Short Hills, um you know, summer, uh the summer of last year. We love the house, love the street. Our neighbors are just absolutely fantastic. Actually, we we lucked out, to be honest. Um having lived lived in the city for so long. Uh and then um COVID, as you, as we all know, COVID happened, um you know, and and life changed. And for us, the way life has changed is our companies, we we're advertising both of us, and both our companies have turned uh full work from home. Uh we no longer have to go to the office, uh which is fantastic in one way. Uh the way it kind of is a detriment to us now is this house is three bedroom and a there's a study attached to our uh main bedroom. Uh but we don't have enough um office space anymore. So I am working from the living room every day. I take my laptop, sit on the couch, and just do my office meetings there. We are desperate, so that's a desperate need of an office space. So our, we hope we can convert our attic into an office space, so I can I can finally have a place to uh to work from. Uh so that's the primary critical need for us. Um the second sort of uh thing that I wanna point out is our kitchen has a powder room in it. Uh I guess in nineteen thirties, that was the thing to do. Now it's just kind of weird. Uh literally next to our breakfast nip, there's a toilet. Uh we we you wanna take that out, convert that to a pantry and and move our um move our um sort of powder room near the front door. Uh so that's that's the other thing. And then finally, I guess, uh what is also important is our house kind of sticks out a little bit from the neighbors. Uh their houses are nice and pretty, and our kind of garage, the way it's shaped, it's just um it's kind of the opposite side of how the house roof slopes. And this is just something that bothers both of us being, you know, creative folks, I guess. Uh and so the minor thing we wanna do uh is just turn the roof of the garage to face the same, um have the same slope as the rest of the house. Uh Doug, I don't know if I've I've kind of described our 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 issues here, but uh I would, we would both, you know, truly appreciate if you could look kindly into our our case. It's been um tiresome last year, COVID and all that, but also just work, balancing work, and not having a place to work uh in this house is really, really hampering us uh becoming a problem.
I think you did a great job explaining it, so, you know, I can kind of maybe take the the board through the plans and kind of explain the variances that we're requesting and and why we're requesting them. Uh so, uh you know, as as they said, the house is built on the thirties, that, you know, on the tax records, it says it was built in nineteen thirty four. It's a Dutch colonial. Um you can uh probably see from the photos as part of the application that the house is kind of awkwardly proportioned. Um and they came to me with the goal, uh which was interesting, is is really they wanted to improve the curb appeal. They wanted to have the house look attractive when they pulled up to it at night, have it look better for the neighborhood. You know, I guess whoever lived there before, the previous owners, really didn't take much care to the house. And and then really, it was just improving the functionality of the house, you know, getting rid of that powder room that's in the kitchen. Um, you know, adding an additional uh bedroom that could work as a as a home office. And so uh let me share my screen and I can kind of take you through the plans.
Please do.
All right, so these are the same drawings that you all have uh that we had submitted as part of our our uh our application. So, you know, the the existing is on the uh on the side, and this is the proposed. We kind of poshade in the areas that are being changed. We're not really changing the footprint of the house very much at all. Um our lot is, you know, those are our calculations, is is only fifty four feet wide. It's really the narrowest piece of property on our street, which is uh and and much narrower than required in the R six zone, you know, R six zone required sixty feet, and we're only fifty four. The house is sided with existing non-conforming setbacks of five point five on the left and eight point zero eight on the right uh to the chimney and ten point five eight uh to the to the main volume of the house. Uh and in this case, eight foot is required on the first floor and and twelve foot for anything over eighteen feet in height. Um we also have an existing non-conforming front yard. Um it's twenty one point five feet to the existing front porch, uh where forty foot is required. The front yard setback is very consistent with all the other homes on the street. You know, it's kind of what you guys call the established setback. So because we're closer than forty feet, uh which is all the way back here, you know, even though all the other houses are really in a line with us, uh we have to ask for variance for front yard setback because we're gonna be altering that section of the house. So basically, the hardship of having a house sided with non-conforming setbacks, a lot that's narrower than required for the zone, and we're also smaller than required for the zone. We're uh fifty three hundred and eighty one square feet, where six thousand is the minimum for this zone. Um, you know, all these hardships uh left us with few options of how to expand and alter this home to meet their needs. Uh so I'll walk you through the plans. Uh on the next page, we have the uh existing on the side and the proposed. So, you know, we're changing some windows in the back of the family room, but the footprint of the family room is staying the same. Uh the powder room is in this location. We're taking it out, and we're bumping out the front of the house about three feet to gain a little bit more space to get a kind of a small front to back powder room here, right off the entry uh door. We slid the entry door out as well, and that gave us the opportunity to to squeeze in a small little coat closet here. So, you know, you can look from the existing foot for first floor plan and our proposed, we're not adding much. We're adding thirty seven square feet, which is is really, really a small amount of square footage to add to make any sort of improvement. But, you know, we can see by, you know, taking out that kind of block in this corner where the existing powder room is, opens up the kitchen a little bit and creates a little bit better flow and work triangle. Um gets the the toilet out of the breakfast room, which, you know, I don't know who wouldn't wanna get their toilet out of their breakfast room. But, you know, this is definitely something that we're we're gonna work towards. Uh on the next floor plan, uh you know, really no meaningful changes here. We're renovating the um hall bathrooms and changing the windows to improve the current curb appeal. None of these changes on this floor impact uh the variances that we're requesting. And then we change these closets around to add a staircase to access the attic. Um we were finishing the attic, so basically we're just adding a dormer out the rear to create an additional uh bedroom with bath on the top level. So uh if we we flip down, these are the existing elevations. And you can see, this is that kind of gable over the garage. It's kind of a unusual element. You know, a Dutch colonial with, you know, these pretty gambrel roofs and these kind of dormers that kind of are all very keeping with that style of architecture. You have this kind of um, you know, gable that kind of kind of pops out of nowhere with a little flair on it. It it just doesn't make sense. It almost seems like an afterthought. There are other houses on the street that have exactly what we're proposing and in this surrounding community. So I thought that, you know, by making this change, like uh you can see here, these are, you know, what we're proposing. So what we're doing is we're pulling the front porch forward a little bit. There's an existing wall. Um but the roof over the front porch only comes halfway across the floor of the porch. So it's this kind of awkward space, because if you sit out there, you still get rained on, you can't get underneath the overhang. So what we're doing is, you can see, we're just pulling this forward just a little bit. And then that really integrates the porch into the main volume of the house. We're adding some columns, which, you know, not only gain structural support, but actually add a lot of character. We're adding a nice little balustrade of fence, so gives the house much nicer street presence um than, you know, the existing halls. Um and by, you know, taking the gable that faced the street and flipping it to the side, you can see we're mimicking the slope of the porch roof, and it really looks much more integrated, like it was part of the original house. You know, this is probably the way this house should have been designed. So let me kind of go through the variances, um kind of explain them to you. On the narrow lot in in conjunction with the placement of the house, um led to the need for these C variances. We need a front yard setback, like I said before, for the front porch. Um we are maintaining the existing nonconformity. Uh we are merely adjusting the front porch to improve prove the current peel and functionality of the space. Uh we need a side yard setback variance. It's basically for this area right here. It's a vertical intensification of the existing nonconforming same side yard setback that we have now. We're just raising it up a foot higher than this peak here, just because of the way the this roof line worked to maintain the same pitch amount of going up uh about a foot, a little less than a foot. I know. So uh this change here is pure purely aesthetic. It doesn't change the functionality or add any floor space or usable area internal of the home. It just creates a more attractive facade. Uh the next two variances we're asking for are six oh six, two E, one E, one B, and one C. And these are both for this dormer out the back. So if we go back to the plan, um the existing side yard setback is measured to this edge of the dormer. So it's a vertical intensification of the same existing nonconforming side yard setback, same as the garage. This is just on the attic level. Um, you know, these two variances, because it's side yard um setback, you know, one is for a one story addition, and one is over eighteen feet. So there are two variances for the same thing. We just needed both of them because it's more than one story tall, and it's closer than twelve feet to the property line. Um the other is the side yard combined. Again, this is this existing nonconforming side yard combined. Uh that's existing. It's just a an intensification of the existing nonconforming side yard. Uh we also need a building coverage, so that's because we're covering on the front of the uh porch here. And so by adding that a little additional roof area led to the need for um existing building coverage. And then uh the last one is for floor area ratio. And by bumping this out, it added thirty seven square feet to the square footage of the home. The house was already existing nonconforming for FAR, so we're asking for an increase of thirty seven square feet of overage, which I feel is de minimis. And because we're building this addition underneath the existing porch roof, I really don't think that what we're proposing here really alters the perceived perceived bulk of the home in the community. I think what we're we're doing just makes the house look nicer, and, you know, who doesn't want the neighbor's house to to look nicer? So I have a photo board I could put in as a uh exhibit, and it's it really shows um just the surrounding community. Um it's P one and it's dated eight sixteen twenty one. You wanna mark that as A one?
I think you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. This was not submitted as part of the application materials?
It was not.
Okay, and we're gonna mark this A one uh photo board consisting of six photos?
Yes.
Uh eight sixteen twenty one, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
So you can see, uh, you know, the the width of the property and the size of the house is varied quite a bit. Our lot is here, which is the narrowest at fifty four. Most of the other lots on the street are are sixty feet or more. This one's a hundred and thirteen. So, you know, it's very eclectic grouping of houses. You know, this same house is built here, but they have a an addition over their garage and a a second garage bay. So their lot is just a little bit wider, but they have a much, much bigger house. You can kind of see it um here in this picture. And here, you know, so all these houses have like two car garages, you know, uh, you know, some of them have one car. Um so it's it's uh, you know, there's no real consistency, but you can tell that a lot of these houses were built at the same time. And, you know, I think what we're doing is trying to just make it look better, so. So I think what we're asking for is not inconsistent with the the community. And I don't think the changes that we're proposing are going to have a meaningful impact on the overall bulk of the the house on the site. You know, we're just asking for minor modifications to the house to really measurably improve the functionality of the home. I still think it's modest in scale, you know, thirty seven square feet of additional FAR, I think, is minimal to make this kind of transformation, especially from the exterior. And I think by having a more attractive home is just a benefit and and overall, you know. You know, I I'd like to submit this application to the board for review. And without these, you know, hardships of, I stated previously, I don't think we would need these variances. So I'd like to open it up to the board for any questions.
Are there questions from board members of any of the witnesses, either of either of the two witnesses?
Just a clarifying question of Mr. Miller. The building coverage, as I see the numbers, goes up by one eighty nine square square feet. If you could just, I know you kind of covered it, but where was that in the front of the house? Where where that additional space is being brought in because you're expanding that area? And is that is that where the one eighty nine sits?
Exactly, it's it's because of the covering of the complete front porch. The existing front porch is only partially covered and it's not supported by columns. So by adding the columns and pulling the porch over the existing wall porch, like there's a low wall on the porch. That contributed to that change in overall building coverage.
That does not change the footprint of the home, as I understood it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions of this witness? Of either of the two witnesses? Anyone in the audience have a comment he or she would like to make with respect to this application?
No hands.
No hands? I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Board members. Comments?
Sure, I'll go, I I would I would be in support of this project, I think it's it's very well thought out. I think that the requests are, you know, they're very minimal to achieve a more functional home for the family and to and to make the house, I I agree, look nicer. And and fit more with the other houses in the community, so I would be in support of this.
And and I would add to Amy's comments that there is a hardship here, as Mr. Ama just outlined at the very beginning. And given the modest increases that are sought here, I I think those are very reasonable. And I would be supportive as well.
Anyone else?
I would I would support this application, just for the record, we have five existing variances. They're still that are currently non-conforming and they're not being exacerbated to minor amounts. Hundred eighty nine square feet, just a little bit on the FAR, so I'd support this application. I'd make a motion to approve unless anyone says any comments.
Just just remind the board, this is a request for variance relief, which includes a D four floor area ratio variance. Because it's a D variance, it requires five affirmative votes.
Do you want to break it up?
Yes, let's break it up, let's do the D variance first.
We have approval for area ratio.
Second.
Second. Frank Plattner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Toger? Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Now the balance of the C variances. Is there a motion?
Some of those.
Second.
A second.
Frank Plattner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Wonderful, thank you all so much.
So much, truly appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
We're going to the third case of the evening now. And I want to do want to point out that we have seven cases listed for tonight. The third case is seventy six Whitney Road. Rosenstein. Is there anyone here on that case?
Yes. John James is presenting.
Mr. James.
Good evening, how are you?
Fine, thank you, are there any other witnesses? Peter and Megan Rosenstein. Let's get the witnesses sworn.
If you would all just raise your right hands.
Sorry, just Eileen and Joe, I just want to remind you that I
He's accusing.
Yeah. Okay.
Amy Lawrence is accusing from this matter of issues within
You can take me out if you need to.
Yes, I'm going to put you back in the attendees for now, thanks.
Okay, if you, if everybody would just raise their right hands, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's soon hearing to be the truth, hold true, come about the truth?
We do.
Yes. Your names, your names for the record, please.
Megan Rosenstein?
Peter Rosenstein.
John James Architect.
Who's going to begin?
I think Megan's going to begin.
Hi, thank you so much for letting us be here tonight and for your consideration. Peter and I made seventy six Whitney our home twelve years ago when we moved from Manhattan with our two year old son. We very quickly fell in love with this neighborhood. I remember my boss asking us how we got so lucky, who told us about it? We've really fallen in love and built some wonderful relationships here over the last twelve years. We've brought two more sons home to this house, they've learned to walk in these hallways and it's really become home to us. Having three children and three bedrooms upstairs has been a little bit of a challenge for us. Our boys are fourteen, ten, and eight. The eight and ten year olds currently share a bedroom and they are, you know, looking to have a little bit more privacy, a little bit more quiet with their disparate bedtimes. We, you know, had spoken at length about the possibility of moving to a different neighborhood or a larger home. And with the relationships that we've built here, we really were motivated to stay. However, we were very thoughtful about the concept of an addition. We really wanted to make sure in this really beautiful neighborhood of nineteen twenties and early nineteen thirties homes that it was thoughtful and respectful and in keeping with the architecture of the neighborhood. And we were very excited to be introduced to John. The buildings that we've seen him put additions on seem to really fit what we were looking for in terms of their consideration of the neighborhood. We've spoken with our immediate neighbors and some of them have even seen the tentative plans and are very enthusiastic about it and encouraging. We've not received any negative feedback from neighbors, particularly those who will be, you know, most immediately impacted by this possible construction. So we're really looking to add a bedroom and a bathroom upstairs, which will allow the five of us to have three bedrooms upstairs and each individual boy to have their own bedroom and Pete and I have a little bit more privacy. It also will help kind of facilitate our continued use of a very small bedroom on the first floor as an at-home office. Peter's been working from home this year, I've been working outside the home as I work in healthcare. In terms of the the parking component of the proposal, and we are looking to widen the driveway a little bit, not the entrance, but further up the driveway. Our fourteen year old will in the not distant future be a driver. And we're always really cognizant in this neighborhood of keeping the cars off the streets with the, you know, ingress and egress of students walking to and from Melbourne Middle School. We're really sensitive to wanting to make sure that there's good visibility for the students who are walking. It's not very easy to walk in the gutters or on the sloped yards. And also, we're very sensitive about, you know, emergency services being able to access the neighborhood with these very narrow streets. So we were looking to add the possibility of an extra, you know, an extra parking spot, which is kind of in keeping with a lot of the neighborhood. I think that's that's pretty much it from us, thank you so much for your consideration. We're really excited about this project and really hoping that we can stay in the home that we love.
Thank you, who's the next witness?
I'm the next witness.
But I'm going to ask for questions when the witnesses are complete.
Mr. James, would you?
This is a benefit of your qualifications, please.
Sure, I have a Bachelor of Architecture from University of Virginia. Masters from Columbia University, I'm a principal and John James Architect in Maplewood, New Jersey. It's a seven person architectural interior design district preservation firm. Since nineteen ninety four, I maintain registrations in New Jersey, in New York, and Connecticut. I presented before this board on numerous occasions during the past twenty seven to thirty years. And all my licenses are currently in order.
Thank you. Your qualifications as an architect are accepted by this board.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen tonight, let's see here. So this is a, let me just get a larger view, can everyone see this okay?
Yeah. Hey, Mr. James, is this going to be a presentation that you have not yet submitted to the board?
I submitted the photo exhibits this afternoon to Eileen. So this would be exhibit A three, which is a series of eight photographs.
Okay, when you say A three.
I'm sorry, excuse me, this would be A one, I have a series of eight photographs of their house in the neighborhood.
Okay, so let's hold on a second, so A one is going to be a series of eight photographs. Right?
Yes.
And that?
And that's going to be it, otherwise I'm just submitting, I'm just going to be showing the board the drawings that were previously submitted as a part of the application.
Sure, so in terms of the eight photographs that you're going to show, did you take these photographs?
I did take these photographs.
And approximately, when did you take them?
They were taken earlier this fall, just before the leaves started falling from the trees. So I would say early September.
And you and you took them yourself, correct?
I did personally, all of them, yes.
Okay, thank you, you can proceed.
Okay, the Rosenstein's residence is located at seventy six Whitney. As Megan said, it's in a neighborhood where all the houses are very tight together. And generally, my experience in this neighborhood is that whenever you touch one of these houses, there's already an existing non-conformity that affects you when you're doing your renovation. And this house is no exception. What we're proposing in this case is to do a second floor addition over top of the existing garage and the mudroom here that would allow them to have the four bedrooms they need for their family of five on the second floor. The existing house is however, non-conforming with respect to the existing side yard setbacks. But this is a condition that we're not going to change. And our new setback, our new addition does comply with its own side yard setback. But we can't can change that existing house footprint issue. We're going to maintain that the same way as it is currently. It's also non-conforming with respect to the front yard. The coverage in the front yard, which affects what we're going to be doing with the driveway. You can see on the site plan that we submitted, we're planning on, you can see the footprint of the house from the front, you can see the two story portion of the house and the one story portion of the house. And what we're planning on doing is doing a master bedroom addition on this part above the garage and the existing mudroom areas of the first floor. You can see from the existing house, all of the walls are outlined in white. This is the footprint of the current house itself. We're only proposing to add a new window in the back of the garage and to close the side door of the garage on the first floor. Otherwise, the footprint remains exactly intact. You can see the second floor built above the first floor has a family room addition in the back over here. And this is the garage and mudroom area here on the left side of the house. And that's where we're going to be doing our proposed addition. So you can see here, we're maintaining the footprint of the second floor bedrooms here. And we had an existing master at this point and two other bedrooms here. And what we're doing is we're simply moving the existing bathroom away from the back wall to make a slightly smaller child's bedroom here, and it'll have a shared bathroom with the hallway. And we're extending that hallway over the back of the garage mudroom area. And we're creating a new master suite over that area, which includes a closet, a master bathroom, and a bedroom here that goes from the front to the back of the house. This fits about exactly over top of the garage. And the bathroom and closet fits over top of the mudroom in the downstairs powder room study. And it extends from the chimney wall of the house just to the edge of the garage on the side. If you look at the house from the front, you can see the existing condition of the house, the two story house. This has a gambrel shaped roof with dormers in the center for the second floor. And you can see the one story garage and mudroom stepping down here. Same thing on the back, you can see the volume of the house, a previous family room addition and the two volumes on the side here. And then here's the new proposal that we're adding and we're taking that exact same gambrel shaped roof. And we're continuing the dormer from the front across here for the master suite, you can see a double window here, kind of like the double windows on the first story in the master bedroom and a single window in the master bathroom here. We're maintaining the existing windows in the mudroom. And we'll probably put new carriage style doors on the garage here. On the back of the house, you can see we're stepping the roof down slightly and doing the same dormer concept along the back with the existing windows here and a new window in the back of the garage. We'll also be taking the first floor canopy that's on the main house and carrying that around the addition just to make it much more continuous. And also just to keep the overall effect of the house itself. From the side elevations of the existing house here, you can see the one story garage in the side of the main house where we're going to add on. From the other side of the house, you can't see it at all. And this shows the new addition. And you can see it matches the gambrel shape of the roof. And then the dormers here match the dormers of the main roof. The dormers here are set back slightly down from the existing house so that it fits properly. The existing footprint of the house at this point is set back from the main house. So in trying to carry the same roof lines up, it needs to be slightly lower, like you would normally expect on a wing of a house. I would like to point out that this house is much lower than many of the neighbors. And I'll show you pictures of the neighborhood. So we're working with a ridge line here that's under twenty four feet, it's approximately twenty three feet nine inches. And so it's over And so it's over eleven feet less than it could be as a two-story house with a full, um, attic. Um, this is a house that really almost has a dormered second floor entirely. And, you know, just enough space for us to put an air conditioning unit in the attic above. And so you can see we're doing windows here on the side of the, um, master bedroom here. And we're maintaining the existing garage, taking out the door and adding a window in the back instead. If I go back to the site plan, I wanna show you what we're proposing to do there. Um, this doesn't seem to be enlarging. Um, what you can see here on the site plan is this is the part of the addition that's on the existing house. And you can see the driveway going out to the street. And at the street, it's actually one lane. And what we're proposing is to come in and just widen the driveway where the sidewalk starts at this point here, so that when we park two cars in the driveway, you'd be able to back out either of the two cars back out to the street instead of having to le- move one car out on the street to back the second car out. Um, I'm gonna show you pictures of several neighbors where most of the houses in the area have two-lane driveways that go all the way out. Um, but in the Rosensteins in the front, we have a really nice garden here where the steps start. And so we're planning on keeping that. And as you enter the driveway, we will keep the same opening to the street and just curve it back a little bit further so that you can back the cars out without, um, hitting into each other. Um, one of the issues with a one-car garage is that if you only had a single-lane driveway, you could never move any of the other cars out. We need a little bit more turning room and here where the, um, existing stone retaining wall is um, for the new teenage driver that's gonna be coming along in a couple of years. I took some other photographs in the neighborhoods so that you would be able to see, um, how the adjacent neighboring houses look and what's been done to adjacent houses. So this is the house, two, two houses down from the left. Um, I didn't photograph the house immediately on the left because it's one of the unusual houses in the neighborhood. It actually has a driveway that goes into the backyard. Um, most of this neighborhood, you can see, had a one-car garage expanded to two cars. Has a full second story plus an attic above it and has a two-car, um, backout space for both of their garages all the way out to the street. Uh, the next one I'm gonna show is on the right-hand side of their house. You can see the Rosensteins here, and it's been added on above the garage. You'd see those, um, car garages here. You have a double-width driveway here that comes all the way out to the street. Um, you can see in this picture the height of the house and this two-story house plus roof above it and how it kind of towers above the, um, the Rosensteins height of their ridge. Um, this is the next house up, and you can see also it's been added to on top of the garage. Has a double-width driveway, comes fully all the way up to the road. And then immediately across the street on the corner, you can see this house here with their addition over top of their single-car garage, the double-width driveway for two cars pulling all the way into there. Um, this is the next house across the street from that and me, uh, second house from them. Um, their addition over top of their garage and the driveway coming fully out to the street. And finally, the house directly across the street from them. Again, their two-story and attic above the garage built out here and the double-width driveway um, at, um, out to the street from the house as well. So we're trying to do something that allows us to have the same flexibility as the other houses in the neighborhood. We're trying to make the character, maintain the character of the existing house here. Um, and keep it within the confines, um, of the same design and within the character of the existing roof, so we're not going above that in any way. We're gonna need three variances for this project. Um, the first one, um, is because of the existing nonconformity of the house itself, which is the combined side yard setbacks. Um, we're maintaining those existing side yard setbacks and do not need a variance for our new work. But it is a very, one of the variances that we do require. We're also going to need a floor area ratio variance for the building of the master suite on the second floor. Um, and the total amount of that variance is a hundred and eighty-nine square feet or two-point-one percent. And this is for a portion of the master suite. Um, it would be a hardship not to build this master suite fully out to the, um, foundations that are existing on the garage, kind of halfway um, over the garage doors would really look terrible in this case. Um, on top of the house. Um, so we feel that building fully out. The new side yard setbacks do comply with the single-side yard setback. Um, are set, um, so there's no issue that there. And then the third variance we would need is for a hundred and thirty-four square feet of increase of the, um, front yard coverage, the coverage in the front yard. And in this case, um, we needed to accommodate a better parking situation and better access in and out. Um, to keep them from having to keep one car out on the street. And we are going to maintain the existing curb cut that is a single width wide and then go wider up towards the house so that it can be properly screened from the street. And we think that'll maintain kind of the same appeal of the house, uh, from the street that's there currently. Um, so that outlines the, um, the three variances that we need. And the hardships on the property in terms of the existing house location and the existing nonconformity of the existing driveway. Um, in summary, I just wanna say that the additions that we're proposing are modest. They are exactly on the existing footprint of the house. Um, their improvements, they're consistent with what's been done in the remainder of this neighborhood for any house that has been renovated. Um, the new work fits very carefully into the layout of the house. Uh, we're not wasting any space here or overbuilding. Um, when it's completed, it's gonna look identical to the main parts of the rest of the house. Um, sometimes there are concerns when we're working on an FAR variance. Um, in this case, it's a minor FAR variance of two-point-one percent or a hundred and eighty-nine square feet. And when you look at the other metrics of the site that, um, regulate bulk, I'd like to note that we are asking for two-point-one percent on FAR, but we are two-point-five percent under the allowable building coverage. And we're also two-point-two percent under the allowable lot coverage. So none of our expansions are affecting those metrics. We are well within those. Um, and this addition will not have an effect on the existing neighborhood, neighbors since it maintains the current footprint. And you can see the separation of the two houses here from them and their adjacent neighbor on the left. Um, they have spoken to their neighbors immediately who are in favor of this project. And I'd also like to note that when you look at the house from the street, the height of it being twenty-three foot nine inches to the ridge above the average grade is still eleven feet lower than could be built um, on this site within the same footprint. So it is a more minimal addition. We're trying to stay within the character of this house and within the neighborhood. I think the improvements that we're proposing are consistent with the established character of the neighborhood. This application will not cause a substantial detriment to the public good nor an impairment of the intent or the purpose of the zoning plan and the zoning ordinance. Um, I believe that our proposal would advance the purposes of the zoning plan and that the benefits from the way which we're adding on to this house would outweigh any, um, negatives um, or anything to detriment for this project. Um, for these reasons, um, we're submitting this application to you for your consideration. Um, are there any questions on anything that I've presented so far?
Questions from board members?
I have a question. Are you, um, are you gonna be able to keep the large tree in the front yard when you do the driveway work, or is that?
We are not going to be able to keep the large tree. I think we're gonna replant a little closer up to the street.
Okay. And this is Meg. If I may speak to that, am I allowed to?
Sure.
Um, Carlo from Maplewood Tree has been deep-root feeding that tree for us for about eight years and cautioned us in the past two years that it will need to come down shortly. Tom Doty is aware of that tree as well. Um, it's an American, uh, holly, and it has not been doing well. We've done our best to keep it alive, but, um, the plan will be to, to replace it with something.
But you won't be able to replace it in exactly the same position, is that correct?
It will move, it would have to move closer to the street because right now it's exact, exactly adjacent to the area where we're gonna be removing part of the sidewalk to expand the driveway.
Any other questions from board members?
I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, so Mr. James, if you could, um, help me understand how, uh, the variances are with the proposal because I'm looking at a house in the R six, right, which requires um, six thousand square feet and yours is eight thousand eight hundred square feet. So from that perspective, help me understand why you need these variances.
Well, we think that expanding the driveway in the front will improve the circulation on the property. And it is, um, will help keep one of the cars from having to be on the street. I have an existing condition where only partial one-car driveway with an expansion just in front of the garage doors is already an existing nonconformity on this site. Um, and I think that increasing that nonconformity slightly by a total of, I think it was a hundred and thirty-four square feet, um, would be an improvement to this property considerably in terms of circulation, in terms of safety, in terms of not having the cars out here on the street. And this is an area where you have a lot of circulation and kids walking from the middle school back to their houses. Um, we have three bedrooms on the second floor. Um, there's been a previous addition of a family room on the first floor. There is no way that we can add out on top of the existing family room because the bedrooms on the second floor, um, totally block that. Um, and we would lose a bedroom by building that in this area. The only available space we have on the existing footprint that we can add over top of is the existing garage here. The mudroom and the small study powder room behind it. Um, building an addition on the full footprint makes the most sense to me from visually looking at the house. Um, it's really a one-and-a-half-story addition compared to the adjacent houses that are two stories with full attics. Um, it does require variance of an additional a hundred and eighty-nine square feet, but I think that's the minimal way of doing it. Cutting a couple of feet off the side of the bedroom here and squeezing everything down, to me, doesn't seem to make a, uh, sense. Uh, you know, especially with the way this house is organized. Um, a family of five and having their, all their bedrooms on the second floor, having four bedrooms, I think is, uh, is a very reasonable request. Um, the existing rooms up here, none of them are really large or huge by any stretch of the imagination. Doesn't have a lot of closet space and things like that. Um, we're trying to squeeze something in that works with the footprint of this existing house. Um, and I think this is really from an architectural point of view is the best way to maintain the character of the house from the front and the back, as well as from the insides as well. There's really no other place to, to place this addition. And then the combined side yards are really because the existing house is already nonconforming with existing combined side yards. Part of that has to do with the fact that it's turned at an angle to the street so that it makes it closer at the back corner and closer at the front corner here. But relative to the addition that we're putting on, our required side yard setbacks here are all being met by the new addition building over top of the existing garage. So there, it's really only acknowledging the existing nonconformity of the existing house as a part of the application. Does, does that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
You're, you're very welcome.
Any other questions?
Sorry.
Any other questions from board members? So anyone in the audience who has any questions for any of the witnesses? Eileen, any hands raised?
No.
Yeah, is there anyone in the audience who has a comment he or she would like to make with respect to the application?
I see no hands.
I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Board members?
I'll, I'll start off. Um, I think this is a, um, very tastefully done application. Um, it's a modest ask. It's a house that has so much character in a neighborhood with a ton of character. And, um, it really is in keeping with the character while still making the house more livable for, you know, modern-day living standards. So I could support this application.
Any other board member have a comment? Yes, Craig?
I too would be in support of this application. I think the, um, the architect did a fantastic job in designing something that is in keeping with the look of the house, since it's kind of a one-and-a-half-story house, the way it sort of appeals from the street. Um, I think it's very thoughtful. As for the driveway, um, I'd like to see cars get off the street and make houses more functional. Um, the use of grass pave, I'm not a big fan of it. So designing a proper driveway that works well, I think, is, uh, far more advantageous for the homeowner and also for the neighborhood, as this neighborhood does have gutters on the side of the road, parking there is ma- be very, very difficult. So I would be in, uh, support of this application.
Any other board members have a, have comments?
Just reminding the board, um, Mr. Chairman, that this is again a FAR variance that requires five affirmative votes.
And we're gonna do it in two different votes. We're gonna have a vote first on the, uh, floor area ratio where two-point-one percent is being requested. Two-point-one percent is the extent of the variance. Is there anyone who wants to make a motion on that variance?
Move approval of the D variances.
Is there a second?
Second. Greg Clitner?
Yes.
Yodi Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
No.
Wolfgang Chuturos?
No.
Shadju Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. I think that's, that's right.
Passes.
Yes, pass.
We, we have five votes.
Yes.
Right, is there a motion on the other two variances now?
I'll move approval of existing variances with the, um, condition that a tree gets replaced where the other one is removed or slightly around that area.
Even though it must be a little closer to the street.
Yes.
I second with those conditions.
Greg Clitner?
Yes.
Yodi Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
No.
Wolfgang Chouris?
Yes.
Shadju Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Congratulations on the vote and good luck on the project.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to the next face.
This is, this is yours as well, John, correct?
Yes, um, and I'm just gonna get my, um, need to just put together my exhibits for you for a minute.
Uh, I'm bringing over the Betlow's. Is there anybody else coming over?
Uh, Rich Keller.
Rich Keller, okay. Okay, I'm gonna bring um Amy back in.
Okay. Now, this is forty-four Grosvenor Place, right?
Forty-nine Grosvenor.
Yes.
Welcome back, Amy.
All right, who's gonna testify first here?
Let, let me throw them in first. If anyone, everyone will raise their right hand, please. Mr. James, if you just raise your hand. Please swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, all true done by the truth.
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do. Thanks for the record, please.
John Betlow.
John James Architect.
Rich Keller Engineer and Planner.
Thank you.
Who's gonna testify first?
Um, Mr. Betlow is gonna speak first.
Thank you, John. Um, thank you, everybody. Um, returning here before the board two years after our approval for a a larger uh home project, which we happily completed uh this past summer. We're back in our home and couldn't be happier uh during COVID. Um, and at this time, we're here before the board to sort of put the finishing touches on a larger project uh to conclude putting uh finishing our backyard patio and putting a small plunge pool in. Um, for those of you who visited the yard today, you may have noticed that we feel there's um adequate screening in place. Um, if the house were set twenty-five feet, thirty feet closer to the street, I think we wouldn't really have much of a need for variance, but it's an older home in the Woodfield Estates area that was built uh further back off the street, leaving us with a smaller backyard, but we feel the design is discreet and provides um your home, our family with something we've always wanted, which is a place to cool off on hot winter days. Um, again, it's really going to be more of a small plunge pool than a uh larger, you know, swimming or lap pool, as you might consider it. Um, several of our neighbors have pools. Um, our neighbor to the right has a pool in their side yard because of similar constraints to where their house sits in their property. Um, house is forty-one thirty-three Grosvenor have pool, so it's in, you know, concert with what's happening in our neighborhood. Um, and working from home more these days. Um, again, it's just something that we've always wanted to do. Um, with that, I'll let John and Rich give you a little bit more detail on the design um that we're considering. Thank you.
Once again, we're gonna go through all the witnesses and then I'll ask for questions and comments from the audience.
John? Um, yes, I'm gonna present next.
John, just want to give your qualifications briefly, please.
Okay, um, um, degrees from University of Virginia and Columbia University, registered architect in New Jersey, New York and Connecticut. All my licenses are in order. I presented numerous times before this board. And I'm principal on a seven-person architectural firm in Maplewood, New Jersey specializing in architecture, interior design and historic properties.
Despite the fact that you're educated in Charlotte, still will accept your qualifications.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna share my screen again here. Um, with, let's see here. Great. Can everybody see this?
Yes. Mr. James, have you, um?
Yes. I had previously submitted um three exhibits to Eileen, which I'm going to be using tonight. Um, exhibit A, exhibit A two and exhibit A three. Um,
Why don't, why don't we take them one at a time as you reference them during your testimony, please?
Okay, exhibit A one is a site plan diagram showing how the rear yard is calculated. Exhibit A two.
Wait, 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 now, what I'm saying is that
Just as we go through.
As you go through them, please.
Sure. Um, so as you can see, we're here tonight again um to talk about the Betlow's house. And the real reason we're here is that um they'd like to have a minor um addition to their back terrace to add a small plunge pool here um at the very back that fits within the backyard of their property. Um, we've completed the previous work that was approved by the board for improvements to their garage and house, and I'll show you photographs of that as we go along. Um, and what I want to do is again review the variances with you and review the hardships. And also review one of the anomalies that's here that came up previously in terms of how square footage is calculated for the rear yard. And then how accessory structures elsewhere, even though they may not be in the rear yard, um count against those percentages, which sometimes throw this way out of whack. Um, we're asking for two variances tonight, and those are for rear yard unoccupied and for accessory coverage in the rear yard. And in both cases, we're increasing an existing nonconformity. Um, and so wanted, but I think what I want to talk about is that first of all, the total increase that we're adding to this property is two hundred and sixty-eight square feet for the additional pool and terrace. And part of the pool is being put within the existing terrace so that we're minimizing um the amount that we're asking for tonight. Um, and the existing hardships for this property are numerous. They're the same ones that we discussed with the board two years ago. Um, first of all, it's an undersized lot in the R three district. It's approximately twenty-five percent less than the minimum lot size. Mr. Keller is going to talk about all of these sizes later on. Um, the lot depth from the street to the backyard doesn't meet the minimum. And then the existing house is in a nonconforming location on the property and is already set well within the rear yard setback. And all of these hardships create the variance that we're asking for. Um, I want to show you a diagram that I prepared showing the backyard, how it's calculated in our pool. Here you can see the house and where we did our previous renovations here on the existing footprint of the family room and an expansion of the garage. Um, but the way rear yard is calculated is that you take the lot line and you take the front yard lot line and you bring that all the way to the back of the house. And you string that across the very rear of that of the um main house um from line to line, parallel with front lot line. And you can see here, we have a tangent pointed a corner of the house because the house in the property is turned slightly angled from what the front property line is. It's angled to the front lot line. And so when we do this, the area that is in this red square ends up being the calculated rear lot area. And this rear lot area doesn't include this blue triangle over here, which is clearly behind the house and anyone would see as a part of the rear yard. And then what's even more curious about this is it doesn't include the six hundred and eighty-five square feet of the previously approved terrace that's in the rear yard. So we have rear yard that's not being counted in this small wedge. And then we have six hundred and eighty-five square feet that needs to be added back into this wedge for calculation purposes. So the actual amount that's in the rear yard is actually um would be conforming if that was how it was calculated is what's behind the house. But this is one of these anomalies in the zoning where you're not counting all the space that's really open. And you're also taking a terrace that's not in it and arbitrarily putting it within that open yard space. Um, the hardship really here is that the Betlow's house has been placed so far in the backyard that it makes it almost impossible to do any type of accessory structures because the calculation is so minute because it's such a small portion of the yard. The real problem here is that if you just moved it forward to the middle of the property, we wouldn't be here discussing any of these variances or our previous variances. Um, but I want to go over what we tried to do in terms of setting up the pool and how it meets the current zoning. So the pool is set um off of the backyard twelve feet so that it is a conforming location for an accessory structure. The new pool and terrace is set nineteen feet off of the side yard here, even though only twelve feet is required so that we just give a little bit more clearance. And we also set it within the line of the existing previously approved patio. Um, so that would further diminish the amount that we're asking for. If you look at pool sizes that are normally being built these days in the R three zone, the pool size that we're asking for of two hundred and forty square feet is less than a third of the size of a standard twenty by forty pool or a twenty-five by fifty pool that we're installing on many R three lots at the present. Um, it meets the minimum rear yard setback at twelve feet. It maximizes the side yard, increases it from twelve feet to nineteen feet. And you'll also notice that we have a wall that is at the back of the pool that further screens it um from the neighbors and provides um a water feature for the Betlow's in their backyard. I have a um artistic rendering here, um, which I had sent to Eileen as exhibit A two. And this shows the existing
What, is, is there a date on this, John?
Um, there's a date eleven, one, twenty, twenty-one.
That works. So uh this rendering, uh was this created by you or under your supervision?
No, it wasn't. This was created by the pool vendor. Um, and it is an accurate, I think it's an accurate representation of our renovations to the Betlow's house, showing the location of the terrace and the grill and the proposed plunge pool with a wall at the back of the pool. And you can see how this has been done to carefully fit within the confines of the existing house and the two corners of the main house and the family room. It's set back off of the property line and there's very dense vegetation around the perimeter. I'm gonna present photos that show the vegetation, but I just wanted to show this to the board because I think it shows the size of the small pool relative to the size of the terrace and relative to the house. We're talking about a twelve by twenty foot pool here, which is um much less than a standard sized pool. It's about a third of the size of a standard pool.
Yeah, Mr. James, before you go off this um rendering, it
Yes.
It appears to me that the pool in the rendering doesn't have the same angle to the house as your diagram. Could you address that?
Let me go back here. The pool is perpendicular to the house.
Okay, no.
Just, just, um, what you can't tell is that the lot line is angling away from it.
Yeah.
Um, but it's said so that when you're within this point, it looks like all is well within the universe. And one corner of the wall is twelve feet and the rest of it is greater than what the minimum setback required is.
Okay, thank you.
No, you're welcome. You're welcome. Um, and then if we want to look at photographs just of the, this shows you the new improvements to the Betlow's garage, but from here standing just at the corner of their driveway, you can see how far back the house is set on the property.
Hey, John, I'm sorry. Is, is this a photograph that, um?
These are recent photographs dated November one, twenty twenty-one. It's a group of four photographs. Um, and they were taken last week to show the um completed conditions of the existing house.
Okay, we're gonna mark this set of four photographs. Oh, I'm sorry, A three.
Perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, so this shows the house being set back here. You can see the improvements to the garage here with the bedroom above. Um, when we come around to the back of the house, you can see that the existing patio is here. And we haven't worked on the patio because we wanted to come back to the board for this um review and approval before completing the patio work. So the existing old patio is left here. It has yet to be completed, but the remainder of the house and all of the additions and work have been completed. Um, this is showing the footprint of the existing house and where we rebuilt the existing family room at this location as well. Um, but you can see here the maturity of the trees around the backyard and how well it screened. Um, this is another view from the opposite corner. I'm looking at the family room here in the back of the house. And again, you can see the mature plantings that are here um that provide a dense screening so that there really are no views out to the neighbors or in from the neighbors. It's really a very private um area of the yard. And then finally, this is the fourth view from behind the family room, the garage just to my left. And again, it just shows the continuity and the dis- the density of the plantings. And the edge of the pool will be located along right here where my cursor is. Um, I think that um all I want to say in summary before Rich gives his testimony is that we're doing a very small pool. It's a third of the size of a normal sized pool in the R three district. It's really a small plunge pool in this backyard, but it allows this family to have um one of the amenities that everybody looks forward to in the R three area. Um, the property is well screened. You can see from the very mature plantings that we have. Um, it's going to have a stone wall at the back of it for privacy. Um, and this stone wall also provides an opportunity to have a fountain to create a water feature and a natural um sound deadening feature as well. Um, the variances um that we're asking for here are really due to the existing nonconformities of the existing site. Um, and not because we're asking for too much. It's really the house is so far back towards the rear of the property line um that it's impossible to do anything um um that would conform within the um the parameters for open space in that rear yard area. Um, the house itself is totally nonconforming in terms of the rear yard setback. It's in the rear yard. Um, there's an anomaly in the zoning ordinance that totally warps the calculations in this instance. Rich is gonna talk more about that. But my diagram showed that where you have a very small space that's calculated as the open space. Um, we have a total of a little over a thousand square feet and six hundred and eighty-five square feet of that's not even in the rear yard. And we have additional rear yard areas that are clearly behind the building that aren't counted because of the differential angling of the house to the front property line. Um, the pool's been carefully tucked into this corner. It's very far away from any of the adjacent neighbors, so we'll have no So will have no effect on them with screening that's already provided by the Betlow's. Um, the the irony here is the hardship's really on the Betlow's because of their existing non-conforming location of the house. Um, if the house was in the middle of the property, we wouldn't be talking about the variances. And they'd be able to have a full-sized pool like all their neighbors. Um, at this point, I want to turn it over to Rich Keller um to talk about it from a more site planning point of view. Um, are there any questions that you have of me or you want to wait until the end, Mr. Steinberg?
Let's wait. Let's wait until after Mr. Keller is testified.
So I'll turn it over to Rich next.
Mr. Keller, will you give us the benefit of your qualifications, please?
Yes, Mr. Steinberg. Good uh good evening, members of the board. Yeah, I'm a licensed engineer and planner on the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed, uh, I'm afraid to say for more than thirty years as both. Um, I have appeared before this board, the uh planning board, approximately a hundred and ten boards throughout the state of New Jersey. Uh, I have um provided uh testimony. I actually am the um. Board uh engineer for the uh township of Long Hill, both planning board and board of adjustment. And I have been a planning consultant to the borough of Caldwell uh uh Board of Adjustment. My licenses are in good effect. I just finished another fourteen hours of training. Uh, last week or two weeks ago, only to uh come back to my office and find. Uh, three of my uh key people in the office had breakthrough COVID cases. So glad I was away, but um it's uh. Uh, it's been a little crazy right here, but uh uh it's nice to see the board again.
Your qualifications are accepted as a planner.
Thank you. Um, if I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen and. Hold on, stop share. Okay. Can the board see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I have a, I have an exhibit. I guess this would be A four, Rob. This is an aerial photo.
That's correct.
It is dated November first, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, the image background aerial photography is, was captured on March twenty-sixth of two thousand and nineteen. Which is before the addition was uh was started. Property lines are taken from the Milburn tax maps and the site plan was taken from my site plan. The um, this is uh, this is orthorectified aerial photography, so we can bring it into a scale. And superimpose it uh with relative accuracy of the of the property lines. Um, to the uh, to the physical features and to our proposal. Um, the uh, and I'm going to just, I I think John did a great job and I'm going to use this for a little more context. Um, in the site itself, let me just move the images out of the way. The um, the property, as John indicated, is located in the R three zone. It's located on the northwestern lead. For the purposes of this meeting, we're going to say it's the north side of Grosvenor Road. Uh, just a few hundred feet to the, to the west of the terminus where Grosvenor turns into Woodfield. And about four hundred feet to the east of Kennelworth Drive. The property uh is located in block twenty-nine oh three. It's got a lot area of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight square feet, where twenty-nine thousand is required. Um, as John indicated, that means it's about twenty-five percent less than that required by the zone. Um, it also has a deficient lot depth, not by much, a hundred and seventy-five feet is required. We're at one hundred and seventy-two point two seven feet. Um, lot width is conforming at the street and at the forty-foot setback, it it conformed. It's it exceeds a hundred and fifteen-foot requirement. But actually, uh, the property is trapezoidal. So as you move back in the property, it gets narrower and narrower till the back line is only a hundred feet. So we we diminish uh by thirty-three percent from the front lot line to the back. And whenever we look at a property, we're called to look at a property. Anytime I see a trapezoidal lot. With a larger front yard, smaller backyard, whether it's a pie or a trapezoid. Uh, it always sets up alarm bells. It says, we could have an issue with regard to the uh very unique. Um, Milburn zoning parameter of rear yard unoccupied. Um, these irregular shaped lots uh are, don't fare well generally under that metric. The um. The uh, so what we have um also exacerbating the shape of that, I'm going to zoom in a little bit. Is the fact that uh the house is set back at eighty-six feet from the street. Uh, the average as defined by ordinance on the, on the block is actually uh sixty-one feet. So we are twenty-five feet further set back from the street than required by ordinance. We're actually thirty-four feet s- set further back from our neighbor immediately to the east. Um, if that, I I would say that uh as was indicated by um by John James. If we took the house, that exact same house in its new configuration, and we slid that up until it hit the. Uh, the sixty-one foot setback, we would not be for before the board tonight. We would not need the variances requested. It's only because the existing house has a very large setback. It's actually the largest on the block, even though we're next to. Uh, properties are one point two six acres. We're, we're the smallest on the block. Um, the others range between. Uh, twenty, just under twenty-nine thousand and just under fifty-five thousand. So we are uh both the sh- one of the shallowest. And certainly the smallest one on the block and then compounded by the fact that our house is set much further back on the property. Leaving very little area in the rear yard to uh to either justify uh accessory structures. Or to meet the rear yard unoccupied requirement. The uh, and was indicated by by John, you couple that with a sort of a a dictionary definition of rear yard. Uh, where you draw a line parallel and concentric with the street through the furthest point back on the house. Uh, you get a very small sliver, uh as was shown on um John's A one exhibit. That's the red area shown um on the chart. So um, just to going back briefly to this uh, this aerial exhibit. I also wanted to show that uh as Mr. Betlow indicated and John indicated. Uh, pools are not unusual in the neighborhood. Most of them range between the next uh door property at fifty-five, which again is in the side, is in our side yard. Um, and partially in in that neighbor's side yard. Uh, technically, that's probably a corner lot next door. But um, it's about uh eighteen feet off the property, clearly in our side yard. It's about forty-five by thirty feet, irregular shape. Um, behind us uh in the area we're putting the proposed pool. Uh, it's really a void within the development of the surrounding areas. That is then ringed by mature landscaping on both uh on both properties, both the adjoining properties and our own property. We look a little further to the west, we can see that again. Um, there are a number of pools in the neighborhood. This is actually one of the smaller ones at about sixteen feet by thirty-eight. You've got about uh thirty-five by twenty nine, thirty-five by thirty. You've got an irregular shape up at the corner. Uh, that's probably forty, uh forty-one by uh twenty-five. We think we measured it. And if you look, there are a number of pools throughout the area. They're really the only difference in what we're planning is that. Uh, our plan, our pool is, as John said, it's about a third as large. Uh, as the pools around us because we have a limited area. We have a small slot in the area. We're trying to be good neighbors. We're trying to keep the required. Twelve-foot rear yard setback. We have a nineteen-foot setback to the patio. Uh, probably a twenty-two-foot setback, at least uh twenty-four-foot setback to the pool. Um, so we have a smaller pool uh that's put into that nook in the back, completely screened from the street. The topography, the existing house, make it so that it cannot be seen from the street. And as John's uh aerial, uh as John's ground photograph shown, uh the dense vegetation coupled with the. Uh, the screen wall at the back means that this will, um, not only is it in a conforming place on the property. And contiguous to other rear yard areas, but it'll really have no negative impact on those neighbors. If I go to our. This is our uh, our variance drawing, which is part of the application set you have for you. It is uh dated. Seven, seven, two thousand and twenty-one. And as the house was being, the renovations, the house were being completed, we updated the base survey. On uh September first, two thousand and twenty-one. And this is the app, the drawing that was part of the submission package. You can see again that there's that very large front setback, which means we have a deficient rear yard setback. So the house is crammed in into the rear portion of the yard. And um, a number of, because of the anomalies that John talked about, and I'll reiterate a little bit. Um, but the anomalies in the way we calculate that rear yard, twofold. One is that some parts of what's behind the house. Don't get to count as rear yard and some, and then the accessory structures anywhere on the property. Uh, if I had a gazebo in the front yard, I would have to divide that by my rear yard area. And I'm limited to twenty percent of that area. So it's an anomaly that um is exacerbated by the fact that the, the. House is L-shaped. It's not perpendicular to the street. It's not perpendicular to the back lines. So you get some unique geometry that sets off this very small rear yard. Uh, against some not very large numbers, not very large patios, but when you have such a small yard, rear yard. Any change tends to give you very large numbers. So if we look at the zoning table in the upper right-hand corner. I apologize, there's a topo unlocked depth uh for existing. It's actually a typo. It's one seventy-two point two seven is the existing non-conforming condition. Uh, that's remains unchanged. Uh, the rear yard, as you can see, um thirty-four point four five is required, we're only twenty-five point three three. Um, what really dictates the rear yard in this, on these type of properties is the rear yard unoccupied. Um, twenty-five percent of the lot area has to be behind the house. That's behind. That uh in that red zone that John indicated on his A one exhibit has to be in that area. Um, I'm sorry, that has to, that within that area. Uh, you have to have twenty-five percent of the total lot area with nothing in it. Well, obviously, before we even start with basically virtually nothing in there, our rear yard is only eleven percent of the total lot area. So um before we even add that two hundred and sixty-eight square feet of impervious to the rear yard. Um, we're way under on the twenty-five percent rear lot, lot area. Uh, when we add that two hundred and sixty-eight square feet of coverage, that drops us down to a rear yard unoccupied of nine point eight percent. And we've requested a variance for that. You can see on building coverage, we are under the um permitted building coverage. And we're well under the lot area. We're more than a thousand square feet under the lot covered, excuse me. Uh, lot coverage existing, we're well under a thousand uh square feet of what's permitted. When we add that two hundred and sixty-eight square feet, we're still roughly seven hundred and fifty square feet under what's permitted at thirty-one point six. So clearly, we're not overdeveloping the property. When we talk about that very small rear yard of twenty-five hundred and fifty square feet, twenty percent of that. Uh, can be accessory coverage anywhere on the property. So we're only allowed to have five hundred and ten square feet. We have eight hundred and twelve square feet uh that was of approved patios. That are mostly in in that no man's land in the L shape of the house. Uh, when we add that two hundred and sixty-eight square feet, uh because it's such a small area, that twenty-five hundred and fifty square feet. That number balloons up very quickly. So we go from twenty percent uh permitted. Thirty-one point eight percent is the existing non-conforming condition. And just that change of two hundred and sixty-eight square feet yields a new accessory coverage of forty-two point three percent of the uh, of the. Um, of the rear yard area. So if we go back to um John's exhibit. I'm going to just reiterate um some real world numbers. So if we look at um this rear yard area and we look at the amount of square foot that's actually in there. This whole area between the, the, the pool, the overlap on the patio, that represents four hundred and seven square feet. If I divide that by that twenty-five hundred square foot area, so just the accessory coverage that's actually in the defined rear yard. That's actually just under sixteen percent coverage, well under the twenty percent permitted by code. If I was to then add in this blue area, which clearly feels like its backyard and looks like its backyard because it's behind the house. Um, that brings my rear yard area uh up. Um. To fifty-seven hundred and eighty-eight. So if I take that four hundred and seven square feet. We take the four hundred and seven square feet here and I divide it by that larger rear yard area. Um, that actually comes out to seven point one percent where twenty percent would be permitted. What throws off the, what's used at is again is accessory coverage anywhere on the property, front yard, side yard, no man's land. All gets amortized against that rear yard area as is defined by our ordinance. So we're really not overdeveloping the site, just it's a small area of uh of change. Uh, produces wild swings in the amount of coverage. So if I go to the um. If I go to the variance proofs, I can leave that up for a second. Um. The um. Actually, let me go back to A one for one second. I'm sorry, A four. Come back to A four, which is our aerial drawing. You'll see that uh we think this is clearly a C one variance. And that is applicable where the um, the exceptional narrowness. Uh, the shallowness of the property and the shape of the property combined with the location. Of the lawfully existing structure on the property and the configuration of the lawfully existing structure on the property. Um, results in an exceptional, an exceptional practical difficulty. Um, even nominally adding any customarily accessory structures to the property without needing variance relief. It's an undersized lot. It has an unusual trapezoidal shape. The narrowness of the lot at the rear all makes that rear yard area as defined on uh John James's A one. Means it becomes very small. Um, because of the L-shaped configuration of the house. Um, not only of the area behind the house gets to be counted in that. I went through those technical um technical considerations. We think that uh the, in real world numbers. This is something like a seven percent rear yard, somewhere between a seven percent. Um, and a sixteen percent rear yard uh accessory coverage is the way it really breaks down. And as we said, indicated before, if we took this whole uh house and slid forward to the sixty-two foot requirement. We could actually do a larger pool and be fully conforming and not be before this board today. Um, this house was built in, I believe, nineteen twenty-eight. Um. Yeah, this house was built um. Uh, I thought it was like, yeah, nineteen twenty-eight. So this is a condition that has uh been affecting this property um forever. Um, the Betlos have been good stories of it. They've made it much more usable. They did an attractive integrative addition. And they're looking to an attractive, well-integrated, understated um accessory structure on the property. We think that there is uh, we certainly meets the nick. So that's the positive criteria. We certainly think it meets the negative criteria. In that there is not no substantial detriment to the public good. Um, the project um can't be seen from the street. Um, it's hidden uh by both existing landscaping as well as the proposed wall. So it. It can nominally, if at all, be seen by the neighbors around the side. It's contiguous to open to uh, to non-occupied areas on our neighboring properties. Adjacent to their rear yards where accessory structures could be placed twelve feet off the line. Um, the. Uh, the pool, the modest pool uh terrace and extensions, uh again, they're modest, they're scaled down because we do have a, a, one of the smallest houses in the property. We're not looking for a twenty by forty or larger pool. We're looking for a plunge pool that I think um John's rendering. Um, which I think was his A three, uh A two, excuse me. Um, actually shows quite well that it's a, it's really attractively screened. It's a, it's a, it's a really wonderful little um muse or courtyard that's created between the wall. Uh, the two walls of the house, a modest area for dining and relaxing where they're double duty. They didn't look to get. A large separate area for sunbathing. It's all integrated into one compact shape. Uh, the size of the plunge pool was again appropriately reduced uh to be much smaller than those in the R three zone. Uh, it's carefully tucked into this private quarter of the property. Uh, and due to the spacing between the adjacent houses, it'll certainly have no negative impact on the neighbors. Uh, the patios are fully compliant. Um, with the twelve-foot setback to the rear and a minimum of nineteen feet from the, that's from the patio to the closest part of the yard to the side. Um, and as we said, the amount of accessory use area is actually consistent with the size of the lot. Uh, it's actually about sixteen percent of the rear yard, seven percent if you count what we think would be in the rear yard. Um, and again, if we move that, if this house had not been built where it was in nineteen twenty-eight. It'd have built something closer to the average and not been pretending to be a one point two acre property. Uh, we wouldn't be here at all today. It's way under unlocked coverage, way under NFAR. We also think that there's no detriment to the master plan. Um, we think that uh, uh, under the master plan objectives from two years ago, page forty-three of the master plan reexamination. Uh, goal number one was to encourage. Uh, appropriate land uses that promote the character of the township as a small suburb of the highest quality. And objective one point oh one was to protect the character of established residential neighborhoods. And encourage land uses and development at an appropriate scale and density. Uh, in my opinion, this is actually exactly that. It isn't, despite the fact that those various numbers look big. This is actually uh appropriate in scale and density for the neighborhood. It's been very artfully crafted. Uh, very um limited in its scope. Um, we think that there'll be neither a. Uh, substantial detriment of the public good nor substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. Uh, and we asked that the board uh approve it. I think it's a great project.
Is there anyone else testifying, Mr. Bello, on behalf of your application?
No, sir.
I'm going to ask the board members if they have any. I'm going to ask the board members if they have any questions of any of the witnesses. Steve.
Yeah, I could, could, could either witness present some testimony as to what extent the recent addition has impacted the variant requests for this project.
I'll be glad to do that. Steve, if we look back here, the additions that we did before were right here on this side of the project. If Rich shows his aerial, you would see that was the area in blue, which was the addition. So what we're doing, what we did on the previous edition has no effect on the rear yard at all. The rear yard was set by where the existing house and the previous family room were in terms of the rear yard setback. We rebuilt the family room, but it was the same depth off the house as was existing before. So there, there are no changes in terms of dealing with the rear yard because of the additions, they didn't exacerbate the situation.
Okay, thank you.
This is one of these cases where it's just, you know, we're dealt a very difficult hand here, and we're trying to do something that seems appropriate for this size house and this property.
Any other questions from board members? Are there any questions from members of the audience?
There are none.
Are there any comments from members of the audience?
There are no hands.
I'll close the public portion of the hearing. Board members, what say you?
Well, I'll go first, I guess. Thanks, I, I, I am leaning towards, I, I could be convinced otherwise perhaps, but I'm leaning towards not supporting this. I, I think it was, you know, it, a pool is a very nice thing to have. But as a board member said earlier, it is not a necessity. And we already have the non-conformities that are being exacerbated by this. And I'm, I'm not really sure I see the hardship. So if someone feels differently, I'm happy to hear what they think about that.
I feel differently. I think there's a massive hardship here in the location of where the house is. I mean, it's a very large piece of property and house is pushed so far back that it gives the applicant barely any rear yard, so I think that's a big hardship.
So I too would agree on the C one, that there's a significant hardship here based on home's situation on the lot. Also, this is the first time I've been back to the house since the, the original addition was done and it came out beautiful. Furthermore, as opposed to C two even, there's no detriment to the, the zoning plan here. The backyard isn't being overdeveloped, we still have a significant amount of green space. And I think this is a very tasteful way of achieving, you know, a modest pool in the backyard along with a tasteful looking patio and good use of the space. Once again, keeping in, in, you know, dealing with the fact that the backyard is not large and the house is posed very far back. So I would, I'd wholeheartedly support this application.
Any other board members have a comment?
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking back over my notes from the previous application. And I have it noted here that apparently, and I don't have all the statistics numbers in front of me, but accessory coverage and rear yard unoccupied were improved and, and in that application. I guess a side yard terrace was eliminated. I guess I'm just wondering if this pool had been proposed at that time, how the board would have perceived it and felt about it if that's if it were done all at once rather than in two, two steps, like the way it's being done now.
Well, that wasn't the case.
Understood.
It's a legitimate question, though. I think that I would support the application because, for all the reasons that were submitted by both Mr. James and Mr. Keller. This is a weirdly shaped, not weirdly shaped property, small property for the district. And more importantly, the improvements are set way back from the street on an angle. Had they been not on that angle, I agree that with Mr. Keller and Mr. James, they would not be before the board tonight at all. I think it's a situation, none of their doing, that they're stuck with. And I would be supportive of the application. Anyone else? Is there a motion? No D variances. So we can take both A motion to cover both of the C variances.
With approval of variances requested.
Motion of approval made. Is there a second?
Second.
Jessica Glad seconds.
Greg Clotner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
No.
Wolfgang Chitoris?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
No.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Variants are approved.
Yes.
Next case.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, the next case on the agenda is fifty two Linden Street. Edward Jacobs. I'm sorry, it's David Jacobs. The applicant. Mr. Jacobs here?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs, are there any other witnesses for the applicant? You're muted. You're muted.
My wife Tammy Wong, next to me is also, and then Carolyn Young, architect, who I believe is now on.
Okay. If, if all three of you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give him tonight to remain be the truthful truth, tell him about the truth?
I do.
I do.
Yes.
Your names for the record, please.
David Jacobs.
Tammy Wong.
Carolyn Young, architect.
Thank you.
Who's going to speak first?
I shall, David Jacobs. So just say a brief couple of words. First of all, hello and, and thanks for meeting with us tonight. I'm David, and as we said, this is Tammy. We've lived in Short Hills for fourteen years. And now that the kids are on their way out with one left after having three, we're hoping to downsize into this house at fifty two Linden Street in the Wyoming section. This background, otherwise known as the Chris Kringle House or Chris Kringle Cottage, it was designed by the renowned architect Joy Wheeler Dow, who has done many houses in the area and built in nineteen ten. Our goal has been to create a modest plan for a more appropriate living space while respecting the integrity of this charming historic and, but small home, should I say. Very small. Following the approval of the project by the HPC in August, we've looked forward to coming to meet with you today. Frankly, I could wax on and on about this property that's very special, it's unique, and I think quite unique for the township. But instead, it's late, so I'll introduce our architect Carolyn Young, who will walk us through the project and the variances requested. Whatever you do, Carolyn.
Okay.
And it's the benefit, please, of your education, experience and qualifications as an architect.
Carolyn Young, architect, I've been licensed in New Jersey since nineteen eighty nine. My degree is from Cornell University. I've had my own practice since nineteen ninety five, located here in Morristown, New Jersey. My license is current and I have testified before this board, but probably not too recently. It's been a while and I testified before many boards in the state.
Your license is in good standing?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Your qualifications are accepted by this board.
Thank you. Okay, so I will start with sharing my screen. And we have a photo package which has not been submitted. So I can label them as exhibits. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Young, what does this photo package consist of before we get into it?
Uh, it's like six photos, some historic, some current and aerial view.
Okay, and you prepared this package?
Actually, David prepared this for us, David Jacobs.
Yes, I do.
So if there's any questions, I guess at the end of your presentation, we can ask yourself or David.
Yes, yes, it just seemed efficient if I sort of walked us through everything, that was our goal, so. Um, so, um, so this is an aerial view of fifty two Linden. You can see it is set quite far back from Linden Street. You can also see it's an unusual situation where there's a, a small tennis club that's adjacent to it on the west side. You can see some of the neighboring properties. And this is the next view where you see a historic picture of the house from nineteen thirteen juxtaposed with the current house taken a few days ago at the end of October. So, you know, very simply, the primary goal here is to keep this interesting and historic structure and to add on to it in a sensitive and responsive way. There are many challenges because of the existing home and its location and its architecture as well as the size of the property and, and the zone that it's in. So really, everything that we're doing is trying to be complimentary to the existing house, be appropriate in scale and proportion, create spaces that are useful for today's living needs. And that's what's driven the design. We have been before the historic board, we had a couple of meetings with them, reviewing the design, and they approved the design, and I think they were pleased with, with the approach that we've taken and the goals of David and Tammy to maintain this historic house and not to be changing it in any radical way. So I will come back to these photos, maybe, well, we'll keep going. So the next photo, you see, once again, the top views are the historic views circa nineteen thirteen. This is the entry door to the house, which is atypical because it is not facing the street, but is facing the driveway that's on the eastern side of the property. This is the, I'm sorry, the western side of the property is the driveway. And this is the eastern side of the home that, that butts a neighbor's driveway. And again, you see today's conditions of the existing house, which are identical mostly to what you see in the historic photos. And these are four additional photos. This is taken from Linden, the one in the top left is taken from Linden Street. Again, you see the architecture of the original nineteen thirteen cottage with the driveway coming in on the western side with the front door of the house facing to the west. Again, a distant photo showing the driveway, the tennis courts are immediately to the right. And then you see two photos to the rear of the house. The rear of the house currently has a addition on it that is clearly not responsive to the architecture of the original structure. It's a sort of nineteen seventies glass greenhouse type of thing. And this view is looking from the house to the rear line of the property, which is about where the fence is and to the homes that sit behind this house. This is the east side of the property with the adjacent house that you see here in their driveway. There is a, there is a small shed, prefabricated shed that's located in the back west corner. And, and then this is just a view west to the back of the shed. So those are just supportive photographs as we go through our drawings and the design. So these are the drawings that happened submitted. And most of the variances, variance issues for tonight, as I already sort of alluded, are, are existing nonconforming issues. Or they are created due to the existing nonconforming issues of the property. To walk you through the variances. By the way, these are the photos that are included on the submitted drawings, which again show the the glass greenhouse to the rear, the entry door to the west, the front view taken from the street side view of the house and the, the narrow side on the east. Whoops. So we have several variances tonight. We are here. We are here with a property that is nonconforming. The lot required for, lot size required for this zone is a fourteen thousand five hundred foot lot. Our existing property is nine thousand square feet, that's only sixty two percent of the required size or thirty eight percent less than the required minimum size. We also have a nonconforming lot width. The zone minimum lot width is seventy five feet, and we are a sixty foot wide lot. Once again, that's nonconforming, where we are twenty percent less than the minimum requirement. We have existing front yard setback requirements of forty feet. And and we have existing side yard setbacks of twelve feet for up to an eighteen, eighteen foot high building and setting back an additional four feet as it gets taller than eighteen feet. And we have a side yard combined of thirty five percent of the lot width, in this case, that would be thirty one point eight three feet. Side yard combined, we comply with, but the side yard setback, we will look at that in the, in the drawing. It is existing nonconforming and it will continue to be existing nonconforming, but our variance is not is not as accentuated as the existing condition. We have rear yard unoccupied, where twenty five percent is the required. And we are proposing a twenty point six four percent. Rear yard unoccupied has certainly been a, a recurring theme in all of tonight's presentations. And I think our issues are similar to the other projects' issues where our house is set back a bit farther than what the zone front yard setback is. And that is accentuating the nonconformance of the rear yard. front yard setback is, and that is accentuating the non-conformance of the rear yard unoccupied. We do have lot coverage where thirty-five percent is required and we are looking for thirty-six point five two percent. We are over by one point five two percent on the lot coverage. Um, building height for this zone is thirty-two feet. The existing structure exceeds that by almost a foot, little less than a foot. That will not change. However, our addition will be lower than the existing building, so our addition will be conforming there. We are proposing a rear yard garage in lieu of a shed that's there. All those numbers do comply. The accessory structures comply, everything is in compliance with the garage. There is a variance that that your zoning officer also flagged, which is a accessory side yard non-conformance, which is for a patio that we are proposing, which is supposed to be twelve feet in compliance with your side yard setback and we're proposing eight point five feet. This is the site plan. Oops, sorry. Go away. This is the site plan for the property. Okay. So it's an undersized lot, nine thousand square feet. Fourteen thousand five hundred is your requirement. We have the front yard setback illustrated of forty feet. Our structure is setback at forty-seven feet. Our side yards are twelve-foot minimum with a combined side yard of the thirty-one. I think is what I just said. Thirty-one point eight three feet. And you can see how the existing house on the east side is non-conforming. Existing non-conforming conditions. You can see that our proposed addition to the back is going to be non-conforming, but it is setback from the existing non-conforming. The existing house is six point oh eight feet from the side yard, but there is a one-story bay that projects out. It's actually even, that's actually less. That's the dining room of the house, which is one point three eight feet. We have a patio proposed to the back, which is symmetrical with the addition and that is also extending into that side yard. That's the accessory side yard patio, the non-conforming. We are proposing a detached garage to the rear of the property. It's going to be a one and a half car garage and it is conforming. The driveway is getting extended currently. There is no driveway to a garage. There is no garage at all. The driveway that currently terminates in this area, but our goal is to get a car in the garage and to be able to have space for a car to be able to pull up a bit to the side. As I've already said, the entrance to the house is from the side, not from the front. And all of the original structure to the front of the property will remain intact. We are not proposing any changes to the original cottage design on the property. Again, it's rather unusual because the tennis courts are over here. I think it's called the Wyoming Club. And David has told me that the tennis club was built shortly after the cottage, so it's just sort of an interesting juxtaposition of this small cottage with the tennis club. Briefly walk you through the design. On the left, we have the existing floor plans. First floor, living room, kitchen, dining room and a den, entrance from the side, as I've been mentioning. And then there is a greenhouse structure inconsistent with the rest of the house to the to the back of the property. Everything about the house on the first floor. And I'm sorry, I should have said the second second floor existing, come up the stairs and there are technically three bedrooms. This one is very small, hardly a bedroom and two others that are very small bedrooms, but functional with one bathroom. And there is a stair that takes you up to an attic space that exists. Everything about the existing house on our proposed design, first first floor kitchen, dining, living and den all stay exactly as they are. On the second floor, the common bathroom, it's tiny bedroom and the other bedroom remain as they are. We take this front bedroom and convert that into master bath and some closet space and lead to a bedroom addition that's on the second floor and a family room addition that's on the first floor below. The width of the family room and the master bedroom, the width of our proposed addition is the same width as the greenhouse that currently exists. And but instead of a ten-foot, eight-inch greenhouse, we're proposing a fourteen-foot addition for the family room. And and the second floor addition above. And we have a patio again to the back, into the backyard area. These are sheet ZB two, this is sheet ZB two, which has all the elevations for the proposed project. You will see that the existing drawing for the Linden Street elevation for the existing and the proposed are identical. We have changed a couple of windows. That was part of our historic review for the project, but architecturally, there is no change to the Linden Street side of the house. This is the driveway side of the house, the west side. Again, the existing house, the original cottage stucco finish is remaining. There is no change being proposed to that portion of the house. And on the right side of this drawing, you see in lieu of the the greenhouse structure that's there is what we're proposing for our addition. Next elevation is the rear elevation of the house. Once again, we are removing the greenhouse glass structure and we are proposing a two-story addition roofline that's consistent with the existing materials that are consistent with the existing use of windows and transoms to let nice light into the family room on the first floor. We are setting in from the side of the house so that the addition is is not as wide or as tall as the existing house. And finally, the the east side addition. Once again, you see that the original house is the same and unchanged in both drawings and to the rear of the house, once again, you see the opposite side of our addition. Two stories setback, stucco finish, architecturally consistent with the existing. The other building proposed on the property is the detached garage. On the site plan, you saw it positioned in the lower west corner of the property. It is detached, certainly because we did not want to start adding more mass to the cottage. We felt that a detached garage is the proper type of building for 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 this property. Keeps the scale down. It keeps it keeps it being charming and and much more in keeping with the cottage scale of the house. The garage is seventeen feet by twenty-four. Seventeen foot four by twenty-four, a little bit wider than what a single car garage needs to be at a minimum. However, as we all know, today we have lots of recycling. We have bicycles, we have lawn mowers, we've got lots of things that we need to put in the garage. So we're hoping that with a little extra width that the garage can handle that kind of storage need and still allow for a car to be able to pull into it. So I think a lot of the variances that we're seeking are are relatively straightforward. I don't need to make our evening any later than it needs to be. Most of these things are driven by the fact that the house the existing house, let's go back. That the existing house is already set to the eastern side of the property. And it is generating existing non-conforming side yards. So for our addition to be appropriate to the house and complimentary, our addition is also seeking side yard. We, the the unoccupied rear yard topic, which everybody seems to have been talking about tonight. Again, if this front line of the house had been seven feet farther forward, which would be at the forty-foot setback line. I did a quick calculation that that would have added with everything that we've proposed, would have added seven more feet to our unoccupied rear yard, which would have added four hundred and twenty square feet to our proposed eighteen fifty fifty-eight square feet, which would have put us at two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight square feet of unoccupied rear yard versus two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, which is the the requirement for the for the for the property. So once again, that hardship is really just is being initiated by the location of the house. You know, however, we do understand that it is it is a variance requirement and and we hope that it's, you know, agreeable with everyone. Lot coverage. We are over by one point five percent for the lot coverage. However, you will notice that we are compliant with building coverage. So our lot coverage is not driven by an excess of of building of building area. And our FAR is under as well, so we are not, we're not over intensifying the site with building. We are over by one point five percent. And lot coverage, obviously, with the detached garage at the rear of the property. It is a rather long driveway, which does impact lot coverage on on properties like this with a proposed detached garage. Of course, an undersized lot. Although your percentage of lot coverage is calculated according to the actual lot size, having a lot that is so much smaller than what's allowed in the zone, I think is also has a bit of an impact on on how much you can easily get on a property like this. And the, you know, the goal here, I think that David and Tammy have been very excited and very ambitious with with this project. This house already in the photographs that I showed you as the first exhibit, this house is looking nicer and better than it did when they bought it back in, I think it was like November or January last year. They're painstakingly doing work to restore windows, replace flashings, make improvements. The inside of the house is rather tired and needs a lot of work and everything that they've wanted to do to this house has really been driven by a passion to maintain the old cottage and to to be sensitive to it as they're trying to to make a charming and small home for themselves. That's all.
Any other testimony for the applicant?
Thank you.
Will you bring down, will you bring down your drawing, please?
Certainly.
Thank you. Does it conclude the applicant's case?
Anything else, David? Anything I missed?
No, I think you pretty much got it all. Thanks a lot, Carolyn.
Yes, concluded.
I'm going to ask now if there is if there are any questions from any members of the zoning board of any of the witnesses. Are there any questions from anyone in the audience?
I think Wolfgang has a question.
I just wanted to clarify that this is going to involve, this will involve removing five trees?
Yes, I believe that's right. And I know that David has been speaking with the arborist.
I spoke with Tom Doty initially and when we were going through the prior to HPC and he'd walked the property and basically said, you're going to need to get permits for that and to show the plan, we developed the landscaping plan, a design. And in, I guess in Tom's absence now, Jeff Pilot walked the property about two weeks ago. And I submitted the plan to him and and he was, it seemed, I can't put words in his mouth, but he seemed he understood what we wanted to do. The concept was that and we're happy to show it to you if you like, but the concept was to to replace any trees appropriately in line with the, obviously, what what the town would expect and what we talked to them about. One of the things that's quite unique in the back is that it's, even though they're tall trees, it's very open. And so a goal for us, as well as for, I think, for our neighbors, is that we can create screening there with large, you know, western cedars or giant operiding in that space. And so our plan shows that. And we're happy to to walk you through that. Having lived in in Short Hills and having had to take down a hundred and twenty-year-old beech tree that pained us on our property, we respect the the notion of green, you know, green space. And what we want to do is be able to create a plan that both covers the green space issues that may arise from having taken some trees down as well as creates proper screening. I think that's even better for the neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I understand that you have submitted a plan?
I provided, yes, I provided it to to Jeff Pilot. Yes, if you like, we could, we could certainly submit it here tonight, if you like.
I have it, I have it available if you want me to pull it up.
I'd like to see it, please.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the first things we did. We actually did the, had hired a land person to give us a plan because we wanted something that we we didn't want to take down much and we wanted something in keeping with the history of the house and what plants they might have had at the time originally.
Okay, so hold on a second, Ms. Young?
Yes.
So we're gonna, we're gonna mark this as A two.
Okay.
And and what is this? If you can maybe scroll down to the signature or the block?
Should I add to that? It's landscape design provided by landscape designer Helen Kenzinger, Kenziger Garden Design, who's not here tonight.
Okay, well, hold on a second. Hold on a second. So it's Kenziger, it looks like in the title block, garden design.
Correct.
And what's the, I can't really see it that well, I apologize. What's the date last?
Yeah, June of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, Carolyn, if you want to just scroll towards the back.
Yep. I don't know why I'm having this little problem here with this. Sorry. I'll do it this way. That's okay. Okay, there we go.
Can you take us through the plan, please?
Yes, I'll do that with Tammy here as best we can. And that is that if you look in the back currently, there are a number of trees that we will be taking out that are in line with you know, obviously cause a problem in terms of any construction that we might want to do, as well as some problems now that exist with respect to roots that are that are causing problems, both for us and to a certain extent, the the tennis club next door. So but in the back, what we've done is if you look, you can see, Carolyn, if you scroll Carolyn, if you scroll towards the back, where the garage is, we're moving a tree there as well as another one to the left side of the garage. And you can see that in back there, we're planting six western red cedars in that place, which should provide pretty good coverage. Right now, you could literally look from our house right into the neighbor's kitchen and bedrooms. All the way, both behind us and to the left. Nothing's really there except these trees that have grown up that have no, nothing really in between us and the neighbors. So we think that's, that's a plus in that space there. Along the left-hand side, we were putting in between 14 to 16 cherry laurels that we expect to grow higher. That should be sufficient in terms of creating, you know, certain screening between us and our neighbors. That's more so than, that's actually there currently. In addition to that, we'll be very planting various plants that our, that our landscape designer actually chose to be representative of the time period of the cottage then when it was built, as best this could be described. And we have examples of that, as well as in the front of the house, planting two new trees that would help make up for a few that may be taken down, but more importantly, be logical spots to have some few trees for screening for the house. It's pretty extensive in my view, as well as all the other plantings we're putting around the house. And I'm happy to go into it in more detail with, with, with the forester as we've already submitted this.
I'm, I'm just going to ask Ms. Young that for both A1 and A2, that they can be submitted to Ms. Dadd tomorrow.
Yes, uh huh, yes.
One other thing you did, Carolyn didn't mention on the side of the garage, there's a transom there, am I correct? That will have, will have a greenery.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
A lattice, excuse me, a lattice.
Yes. Okay, take this down.
What was that word you just said?
Lattice.
Lattice.
Lattice, okay. Thank you. Board members, any other questions of any of these witnesses? Anyone in the audience have a question? Anyone in the audience have a comment he or she would like to make with respect to this application?
There are none.
I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Board members, what are your thoughts?
I'm, I'm in support of this application. I think it's really well done. It's a very special house. And, you know, everything from the architectural details to the landscaping plan. I, I'm fully in support of it. And I love, I'm sorry, I just want to add, I love to see people who aren't scared of a really old house that's smaller and, you know, not, not what most people, you know, would, would think of, you know, for, you know, for living in, you know, in, in the time that we live in right now and that they kind of take on the challenge and make it livable, but still, you know, still keep all of the character. So I, I really commend the applicants.
That's exactly what we're trying to do.
Anyway, anyone else have a comment? Yes, Wolfgang.
I would just echo, echo what Ms. Latch has said, and I would add that I also appreciate the modernizing effect of putting a garage on the property where there currently is not one. And that actually does, I mean, currently the house is in violation of, because it requires a garage, and this actually remedies that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Let me, let me give you my thoughts. My first thinking, which I've changed, was that I thought there was just too much going on on this very small lot. But the more I hear about the, the interests of the applicants in both modernizing the house and maintaining its status as in effect a historical house. Especially the landscaping plan, which impressed me. I too would feel justified in voting for these variances, although there are many for a small property. Is there a motion in this case?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ed Claytoner?
Yes.
Yodi Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturro?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. We are theoretically on the last piece of business for the night as we approach 10:30. And that is calendar 38, 33-21, 15 Meadowbrook Road. Is the applicant here?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Yeah, it's for me, 15 Meadowbrook Road, yeah.
How do you pronounce your name, sir?
My first name is Ching, sounds like a C-H-I-N. Yeah, it's like a whole, yeah.
Proceed.
Just wait, just raise your right hand. Do you swear for my testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing, be the truth, hold truth, not about the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name's, spell your name for the record, please.
My first name is Ching, Q-I-N-G, last name is Z-H-A-O.
Proceed.
Okay, so I really appreciate it's like I've been very late. It's okay for me as a programmer, but I think for everyone, it's like I really appreciate giving me the opportunity to present. The, the application, we are present here for review is to add a bedroom on our second floor. Let me see if I can share. Okay, you can see the sharing, right? Yeah, so we have a family of four, and sometimes I have the grandparents coming by. We have a, on the, our second floor, we have three bedrooms, but there's only one bathroom. We have a 15 year boy and a 10 year old girl and me and my wife. So it becomes like a kind of like a difficult for us, especially during the special hours during the morning or at night. Because there's only one bathroom on the second floor and the other one is like a far corner. We have to go all the way down the stairs and across the, the, the living room. And it's in like a far corner. If you look at the, the chart on the left upper corner, that's the, the first floor, the layout of the first floor, the bathroom is on the upper side, right? And if you look down here, this is the second floor currently we have, there are three bedrooms and one bathroom. So we really need the one bathroom right now. And also for, this bedroom is like extremely small, how small is like if we want to fit in the, 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 the bed is like to barely just put in there. So our proposal is like we have, but just extend. If you look at the shaded area, the dot, the dashlines cover here is like, we have a first floor down there. So we want to add the second floor top. And this is a facing backyard. And if we look at the, the chart, this is like a from four sides. The, the button on the, on the left is where we see from the, the street. If this proposal being accepted and finished, there's no changes from the outside. We cannot even see any difference. And from backyard, you can see there's the top, top left one. It's like you can see there's a one added bedroom. And from sideways, you can see there's like a added AO shaped area. And I just opened the, the Google map, this is where we located, the edit is like our backyard, facing the backyard of our neighbors. So, so basically that's all, and
Mr. Zo, we can't, if you're referring to any exhibits, we can't see them. So
Yeah, this one is like, I, this one is not, it's just the, I, I just opened from the, the Google map.
But, but, but Mr. Zo, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you. We, the board and the public cannot see what you're referring to. The only evidence that the board is to consider is evidence that you submitted in advance of the hearing to be supplemented by any additional evidence you may want to present this evening.
Okay, yeah, sure. Yes, yeah, I understand. So yeah, this, this one is submitted, the, the, the design chart, the, the
You had to share your screen.
Oh, I think I did, did I?
No, we're not seeing your screen.
Oh, really? I apologize. I thought I, I thought I shared it, just one second. Oh.
There we go.
Can you see the sharing?
Okay, now, now we
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I saw, I saw the, David.
Okay.
So I was talking
That's okay. That was where the confusion lay. Now let me, let me ask you a question before you continue. These plans that you submitted as part of this application, I do not see a title block on them. Did you prepare them yourself or did someone else prepare them?
I asked the, the, called the MV Architect from Passipani, they prepare all the charts for me.
All right, well, who, who are they? And I don't see any of their information on these plans that you submitted.
It's in the, in the attachment. I think it's on, I don't know on which page.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, sir, that there's typically on a submitted plan, you would have the architect or the designer who actually designed the plan with the date of the plan. And I do see a date of August 27, 2021, but oddly, it does not identify unless I've missed it. Who actually is the designer for this project?
I think the, their contact and the license numbers and the address is on the, I think it's a page four or the, in attachment. That, yeah, the originally they put the name down there, but once I say, submit for hearing, they changed my name, changed the, like a signature to my, like I use my name as my residence design. So it's on the
You, you were not, you're not an architect though, correct?
I'm not.
Now, excuse me for interrupting you, because the plans that I have in the applicant's folder are a three-page plan, A1, A2, and A3
Yes.
that have MV Architecture LLC. That is not what you have?
I, I don't have that.
I, well.
I think the original one, yeah, the original one I gave to you has their contact.
So the copies that you gave me for the board do not have that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, the, the later one, I asked them to, they say they changed the name to my Zal residence.
Huh, okay.
Either do the ones on the website, because I'm just actually pulling up the ones off the zoning board website, and they also do not have a
Right, because I, he sent me the PDF plan, so that's what I
Yeah, uploaded.
Yeah.
Well, the plans that I have show an architectural firm, engineering and land survey firm of Benjamin in Wizera.
Well, that's the survey.
That's a survey.
Survey.
That's the site plan.
Right, it says site plan, but it's actually the property survey that's been marked up and in March.
Mr. Zo, do you wish to continue?
Yes, okay, so I, I do apologize, I didn't even realize it's not sharing. Okay, so this is a chart, if you look at the up left corner, this is a current we have on the first floor. And if you look at down there, this one is a second floor. So right now, we have a three bedrooms on the second floor with one bathroom. And we have four family members, and sometimes we have in-house. If they come back, they will go to the, the first floor, the bedroom here. So basically, we, even though we said two bathroom, but the only one for us, it's like, it's really, really challenging for us during, in the morning or in the evening. So our plan is on the second floor, we add this dashline as a new bedroom. Also, I need to add is like a, this one, there's a one bedroom is like a very, very small. We want to turn that into our office. And this is like a from four sides, we can see the, how it looks like if the, the house is finished. The, the bottom left corner is what we can see from the street. There's no changes at all. And the, the top left is from the backyard. We can see the added part is on the upper corner. And on the right-hand side, it's like from the sideways, from my neighbor, actually it's from neighbors' backyards. You can see the added is like an L-shaped two parts.
Quick question, on your attachment E, you have no information as to the existing size of your lot?
Oh, the it would be which page?
Keep going down.
My attachment F, yeah.
It, it's on the plan, but it's not on E.
Yes, if we look at here, there's a size, and let me see if the first page, this is upon the architect, the, the lot size, right? Right now, the lot size is a 5,282, it's not in, not the confirmation, conforming, but there's no change to that. And the, the lot width is also not conforming. And, yeah, and the variance is, there are two variances, one, if we go back to page nine or three. Yeah, these are two variances, one is a combined step by, right now is, I think right now is 30, 32.
And. Mr. Zhao?
Yes.
Can you, can you provide testimony as to where the variances are actually being incurred on the plan?
The, the various calculation, I think it's a link, I think either the calculation and the put on there, right?
Right, right. So my question is, are you able to look at your plan and demonstrate for us or indicate to us where the variances are occurring? Where the, the violation of the zoning is occurring that requires a variance? Are you able to do that?
Okay, yeah.
So could you do that?
Yes, so I will submit afterwards, right? Or you want me to show you the? Yeah, this is where we have. I think the, the, the side, the setback calculation is based on, from the far end, and because it's another like a regular shaped, so it's like a trap toy. So we take the, by the average. And this is, this is the, the narrowest point from my house to the, the fence right now. And the new adding will be like, need to be the narrower. So it's not, so the whole footprint is not, is not changing it. And the second floor is like with a, a little bit in, towards inside.
Are you saying that with the second floor addition, that your combined side yard setback is not getting any worse than the existing condition?
Correct. I think based on the calculation from the exhibit, I'm sorry, the attachment, the required is a 35. The current is a 30.2, right? The proposed is 32. So it's like a getting better, the, the, based on the calculation.
And, and what is it? Can you show us why it gets better?
That reasoning is, if you look at these lines, the dot edge, this dash line, this is where the house right now, towards the fence, to the, to the left. And the new addition is like, it's like a set inside, set back a little bit. This is a new addition.
Right, but the, the variance on the first floor is not changing. You're saying that the variance for the second floor, okay, I see, is, is less. Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, and can we now move to the floor area ratio?
Yeah, the floor area, the, the new adding is, this is, you can see the shaded area, that's a new added. The floor area, the, right now, the permitted is 36, and our proposal is a 42.3. I think the current is like 34 or something, is, it's a very close to 36.
Well, again, go back to your schedule E, please.
Okay. Yeah. This one, right?
No, 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 the schedule E, the one that shows the variances on the table.
This one.
Right, this one, right. Yeah, this one, right here, right, okay. So you say existing usage is 1831, right?
Yeah.
Now you want to propose that at 2238, which is 42.3%, is that right?
Correct.
It's actually not. The calculation's wrong.
Yeah, I think so.
About four square feet.
Okay. And then the maximum is 36. So your, your variance is 337 square feet?
Yeah.
I don't know how that, I'm confused by that.
It's, it's difficult when the architect to apparently design these plans is not here to testify.
So.
Well, I mean, the cap, I mean, he's existing at 1831 square feet. He's doing a 407 square foot addition, which brings him up to 2238, where he's allowed 1901, so.
So what's the 337?
337 is addition.
No, it's not. No.
No.
367.
The 337 is what he's exceeding the maximum requirement.
Yeah, it's the deviation.
Yeah.
That's the deviation.
The 2238 minus 1901.
Right.
Yeah.
But the problem is that we're not hearing any justification for this variance, which is very substantial.
Okay.
My inclination is the same as yours, counsel, is to advise the applicant to get a, a professional to come in here to justify under the statute why we should grant a floor area ratio variance of this size. That would be my inclination.
Mr. Zhao, do you understand what the chairman is saying?
Yes. Yeah, I, because I didn't do this kind, like application before, so I didn't realize I should bring my architect with me. Then that makes it much easier.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, if you notice from the prior applications, and, and you certainly can hire an engineer, you can hire a professional planner. You can, you can just bring your architect, that's up to you, that's your choice. But as you saw from the applications before you, that each one of them, including those that requested FAR variance relief, had a professional testifying in support of the plans that were submitted.
Yeah.
When is the next date that we should give this applicant, if he chose to take an adjournment tonight, Eileen?
Well, I could squeeze him on to December 20th. Because, I mean, basically, we've heard the entire application except for the proofs for the FAR.
Yeah.
I don't imagine it would be that time-consuming.
Let's ask the applicant, do you have a, would, would you like an adjournment until December 20? To give you an opportunity to hire a professional who might be able to justify these variances that you're looking for?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so this matter, which is Zhao, on, let me get the address in front of me.
Mr. Zhao, can you stop sharing your screen, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Zhao. Let me make a formal announcement that your matter at 15 Meadowbrook Road, which is calendar number 3833-21, will be carried without further requirement for you to either publish or notice anyone. It'll be carried to the night of December the 20th, which is a meeting of this board at 7:00 PM on, on the Zoom platform. Do you understand?
Yes.
And you will be probably the first case heard that night, although I can't make you a promise without effect.
Okay, sounds great.
Eileen, do we need an extension?
Yes, if we could just get an extension till the end of the year, that would be great.
So, Mr. Mr. Zhao, we need you, if we are to carry this hearing until December 20th, in terms of the statutory deadline for the board to make a decision, we need you to agree on the record to extend the time to decide through the end of calendar year 2021. Do you agree?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. All right, is, is there anyone who has a matter to bring before the board that is not on the agenda? I hear none, I see none. We are now at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Happy holidays, everybody.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
There was by tonight.
Yes.
Steve got the second.
In favor, let's see if she'll answer.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, everybody said yes.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.